Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November 8, 2022 Regular Board of Supervisors Meeting. As customary, we will start out with a moment of silence, and we have some moments of silence. Supervisor Simon?
Moment of silence for Chris Simon. Chris Simon left here on Wednesday, November 2. She leaves behind her husband Ray Simon, her son Eric Guerrero, daughter-in-law Lisa Guerrero, grandkids Nick, Essie, and Georgia, and also her father Tom and Sharon.
And then we have one from Vice Chair Piska.
On Saturday night, Carissa Ramirez, and was known as Carissa Taylor for many, many years, was killed in a car accident at Clear Lake Oaks, and leaving behind two children, young children.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And in the area of Clear Lake, on September 13, Jesse Cabana went missing. He had a mental illness, a lot of worries of where he may have gone and where he was, and even with working with law enforcement for over a month. It was unfortunate that this past Friday, I believe it was last Friday, that his body was found, and he had passed away, and just want to hold his family and his friends in our hearts today.
Bob Perez, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
I can. My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Item 4, Consideration of Extra Items Not Appearing on the Posted Agenda. Do we have any at this time? Not seeing any. We will move on to the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda is an item on our agenda where we approve these items as they are non-controversial. However, if there's somebody who wants to pull one from the agenda, please, we'll ask the board first, then we will ask the public, and we can get into a more in-depth discussion about these items, either later on the agenda or we'll fill them in. So Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, I request to pull for further discussion Item 5.8.
5.8. Okay, let me just, okay. And then, let's see, any others from the board? Not seeing any. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to pull an item on the agenda?
5.8.
It's the same. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joan. Supervisor Sabatier pulled that one, too, so we'll make sure it's done. All right, so not seeing anybody on the agenda, oh, I'm sorry, Zoom with their hands up, so we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 5.1 through 5.7.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. It is 9:04 right now, and our next item is 9:06, so do you think the 5.8 will take a couple of minutes, or is it a more in-depth conversation, you think?
I think it probably might take more than a couple of minutes.
So with that, let's go down to 7.2, Consideration of the Following Advisory Board Appointments, Spring Valley CSA Number 2, Helen Mitchum and Cindy Storrs. I know that they're reappointments, so, let's see, yep, they both are reappointments. So what I'll do is, is there anyone from the board that has any questions? And open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to discuss the CSA Number 2 in Spring Valley? Not seeing anyone in the chambers or on Zoom. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I do have a quick comment on that. I know that before, in our memo, would tell us how many positions were open. Here, it seemed pretty obvious, since they're reappointments, that those two positions would be open, but it's always nice to know if there's a third position open, just because sometimes it's not common knowledge, and that helps us to maybe go out and start recruiting and looking for people. Just wondering if that's something that we can bring back.
Okay, we'll make sure on that.
And I'd love to make sure we get consensus from the board, so it's not just a unilateral thing.
Yes, I agree.
And, Mr. Chair, if you approve of these two individuals, I move to approve Helen Mitchum and Cindy Storrs to the Spring Valley CSA Number 2 Advisory Board.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, and it looks like that item, so we now are, aside from our calendars, this non-timed items are knocked out, and it puts us right at 9:06, public input. Looks like we have a couple on the list here, so we'll start with Eric Robinson, just for the benefit of the public. Citizens' input is conducted. You get three minutes. Please state your name for the record. I do have the documents here. If there's anyone else that would like to conduct public input, just fill out one of the documents that are at front, and state your name for the record when you come up, and we will listen to your concern. Just know that we will not be able to address the concern. However, we will work to get you in touch with your supervisor and the department head and/or the department head that's in charge of the situation or issue that you have. So with that, Eric Robinson, if you'd like to come up, it looks like you have a concern you'd like to put on public input. State your name for the record, please, sir.
My name is Eric Robinson.
Okay.
And I moved here to Lake County in 1946. And I have 120 acres on Kelsey Creek, and that's where I moved to in 1946. Kelsey Creek is the largest river going to Clear Lake. Now, if I was to dam it up and not let any water into Clear Lake, I might have a problem with the county, especially if I sold the water to Los Angeles. I've had PG&E on our property since 1950, and I've always had a good relationship with them, and a lot of squabbles, but they were always really straightforward and honest, and we worked things out. And it's been a real benefit to me to have electricity on a farm, and I really appreciate all the work they did for me, and they did a lot of work for me. But at any rate, PG&E is really a state office. It's governed and run by the state of California, and I think the governor has a lot to do with that for something to say over. Also, when I moved here, most of the roads were dirt roads, and now they're paved roads. And a lot of that roads have been improved a lot by the state. At any rate, the latest project, or some of the latest projects haven't been so good. PG&E's latest tree-cutting project has been somewhat of a good idea to have fire breaks. This is really important here in Lake County. I've seen a lot of fires here, and I've lost several houses and buildings. And in 1960s, our farm burned completely, and we lost a lot of trees due to the bark. At any rate, there doesn't seem to be any county person that has any control over people coming in from outside cutting trees. And this has caused a lot of damage. Now, this is also a problem with the state road department cutting trees. Now, if I want to build some houses on my farm, I have to get clearance for conservation.
Mr. Robinson, if you can come to a close, your three minutes is up, so if you can finish.
Okay, I'm just saying that, what I'd like to say is, a lot of the state's road-building projects have been a disaster, a waste of money, and not really addressing the people of Lake County at all, or the environment, or the planet. And also, their tree-cutting or PG&E.
Sir, you're way over your three minutes, so if you can come to an end.
Okay, well, I guess you get the idea of what I'm saying.
Yes.
But, you know, three minutes isn't a very long time, and the trees they cut were 300 years old that didn't need to be cut, and nobody from the county addressed this. There was no conservation people out there.
Mr. Robinson, you're still, you're like over a minute now, an extra minute, and so if we can, we can, go ahead, Supervisor Piska.
So you did come to the Cockberry Council meeting a few weeks ago for the October meeting, right? At the Little Red Schoolhouse?
Okay, I just hope you consider the situation before these people come back again next year.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to share with you that the Cockberry Council has a Forest Stewardship meeting that meets at least a couple Fridays during each month at the, it's called the Hub Office, right next to the post office in Cobb, and I can connect you with the people that are running that meeting, and this is one of the things that's discussed with that group. So that's the Cockberry Council's Forest Stewardship Committee, and I can, if you want to leave your name and your phone number, maybe at the office here, in our admin office, I can get back to you with that information.
Okay, yeah, that might be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so we have Natasha Robinson.
Hello, my name is Natasha Robinson. I'm here also to talk about PG&E's, the EVM, I guess, project by PG&E. And, you know, we have all these fires and all these problems because of global warming, and it seems ridiculous to me to exacerbate the problem by cutting down trees that are absorbing the pollution and cooling the ground and cleaning our air and making shade. I understand taking out sick trees and trees that are a menace to the wires, but the reality of it is, is they've cut thousands of trees that are not within the distance of the wires that are extremely healthy, and I know this because I've had an arborist come out and check the trees before they were cut, and they were in great shape, and he said as much. So in a time when we're at crisis because of global warming, why are we removing thousands of healthy trees? And why isn't there any oversight? And why also is there no mitigation? If they're going to take out healthy trees, old trees, big, huge trees with nothing wrong with them, well, darn it, why aren't they going to mitigate what they've done? Where's the balance? I mean, you can't just come up, and these companies from Santa Rosa don't care. You know, this is obviously maybe some buddy chummy thing, I don't know. I mean, conspiracy theories aside, somebody's making a lot of money off of this, and at our expense, at our property expense, at the environment's expense, and where do you guys stand? Are you guys going to back the Cobb, what is it called, the Conservation Stewardship? Are you guys going to support us? Are we going to see some support from you guys? That's what I'd like to know. We can join all these groups and, you know, be upset about it, but like, are you guys going to weigh in on this issue? Because this is, like my father said, next year, they will be back with more money, more chainsaws, more trucks, and they're going to cut down more trees, a lot of which are going to be healthy trees that would have benefited the environment and our communities and our neighborhoods and the planet as a whole. You guys got to understand, we're in climate crisis, we're burning down, yes, but why doesn't PG&E get the proper wires above our properties instead of cutting and clearing, and you can do this till there's not a tree left, and it still doesn't matter, debris will blow around because of these incredible winds we got, and now that they've cleared the lines, they've opened it up for strong winds with no, and the bigger trees have been removed, now the strong winds can toss around these little trees and throw the branches on the wires. It doesn't matter, cut down every damn tree you want, it's still going to be a problem until they fix those darn lines. When are they going to upgrade their system and save our communities? And we need some support, please, from you guys on this place.
All right, thank you.
So the Cockberry Council is a municipal advisory council that advises the Board of Supervisors appointed by the Board of Supervisors. I attend every one of those meetings. I'm in close contact with that Forest Stewardship Committee, and at the last meeting, when PG&E made their presentation, they gave a phone number for Sal Rodriguez, who, and I'll give you the phone number right now, it's 707-449-5859. You can leave a voicemail for Sal, and he'll get back to you. He's the person that you can speak with if you've got questions about the work that needs to be done. He's sort of a community liaison, so I encourage you to attend those Forest Stewardship meetings and also contact Sal if you've got issues. And, you know, if you don't get anywhere with Sal, you're always welcome to send me an email, but I need to have it from the property owner with the property's address and a detail of the problem.
Okay. I mean, I just don't see much change, you know, there's all, but this is just public input.
Yes, this is, yes.
It's not, okay.
Thank you. All right. Looks like we have another person with public input. Please come to the microphone, state your name for the record, and we'll start at three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Annie Barnes. I'm co-founder of Sunrise Special Services, and I am here because on July 12, there was a hearing in regards to a contract with Lake County Behavior Health, and at the end of that hearing, county council even stated that it would need to be continued due to give Sunrise an opportunity to respond to comments both by Supervisor Crandall stating that we had had some concerns with the contractor, and also a young man, Zachary Ray, who also stated some concerns. This has been laid very heavy on my heart, and we have worked with this county for over 20 years, and not having an opportunity to respond to these comments has really hurt the company and the reputation which we have really worked hard of. And all I need to say is, I ask for an opportunity to have a continuation and to respond to these comments that has, I must say, since these comments were made, all I do know is that Supervisor Swife, Crandall's wife, worked for Sunrise and was let go two months prior to July 12. And a young man who came up and made comments of Sunrise's work with the tribal community, I asked the tribal, the three tribes that were involved, that Sunrise had worked with, I received a letter to state of the kind of work we have Sunrise has done. And also, the ex-wife of this gentleman led the grant that Sunrise had written for the three tribes that was over $4 million, and it's his ex-wife. So to me, to us, nothing else, letters were written to both people, to the Board of Supervisors, requesting to have answers, so we have an opportunity to answer to that, and there has nothing been done on that. That's what I'm asking, because it certainly feels like a very personal vendetta, and we want to continue the work we've done in this county and not have this terrible cloud of our reputation and our work continue after all this four months. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has public input? All right. I don't see anybody on Zoom, so we'll go ahead and close public input and move on to our next item on the agenda. 6.2, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month. And Supervisor Simon, we'll go ahead and read this proclamation. There's anybody from the public that's here on behalf of any of the tribes, please come up and stand with Moak and myself.
Thomas, I see any in the audience, can you come join us? Welcome. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation designating the month of November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month. Whereas the Lake County has been home to the people, home to people for greater than 12,000 years, and the richly diverse cultures of the seven tribal nations, indigenous to Lake County, Middletown Rancheria of Pomo Indians of California, Coin Nation of Northern California, Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Abemetal Pomo of Upper Lake, Robinson Rancheria of Pomo Indians of California, and the Elam Indian Colony. Have informed every aspect of our community's history, policies and practices of the United States and earlier colonial governments deprived indigenous people in the state of California and Lake County specifically of land holdings, liberty, even life itself. And whereas Native Americans have helped to make our community stronger and more prosperous, on August 3, 1990, President of the United States George H.W. Bush declared the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, thereafter commonly referred to as Native American Heritage Month. The bill read in part that the President has authorized and requested a call upon federal, state, and local governments, groups, and organizations, and the people of the United States to observe such month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And whereas this landmark bill honoring America's tribal people represented a major step in the establishment of this celebration, which began in 1976, when a Cherokee Osage Indian named Jerry C. Elliott High Eagle authored the Native American Awareness Week legislation, the first historical week of recognition in the nation for native peoples. This led to 1986, within President Ronald Reagan proclaiming November 23 through the 30th of 1986 as American Indian Week, President Barack Obama made a presidential proclamation the 31st of October of each year that each respective November would be the National Native American Heritage Month. We celebrate the richness of the county's unique tribal history and traditions and the impact Native American cultures have had on every American. And whereas the Lake County is committed to protecting the sovereign right of Native American tribal organizations and institutions to strengthen their own communities and observance of American, of Native American Month. The County of Lake encourages all citizens to join in recognizing the accomplishments and contributions Native Americans have made to our county, and salutes those who have sought to honor the important role tribal leadership in our county's past, present, and future. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors declares November National Native American Heritage Month in Lake County, California, passing and adopted on the 8th day of November 2022.
Yes, no, I'm glad to have this proclamation, and if there's anyone else that would like to speak on this, maybe Annie, you work with tribes, would you like to say anything?
Actually, what a really proud moment. I think we are probably, if not the only county in California that has two supervisors, tribal, from tribal communities. Am I correct with that?
Sure, for two, yes.
Yes, two at the same time, and in the years that I have been in this county with over 30 years, I am just proud of all the things that I've been able to be part of and to learn, because it's the elders have taught me, and so much has happened in all these years, 30 years. It's a wonderful thing, so thank you for giving me this opportunity to state this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers? Anyone on Zoom?
I see no hands.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Moak, for reading it, and Thomas?
Yep, thank you. It is an honor to stand here today for you with the proclamation. I know that our tribal nations here in Lake County are strong, we completely, you know, dive in and help with our communities around and our neighbors, and, you know, it is, today's a proud day to just be a tribal person in Lake County as we help everybody move forward. We are one as a community, and I hope that our service here as tribal members on this board for Lake County, you know, just helps solidify that. So we want to thank everybody for the communication and cooperation here in Lake County, and yeah, make sure to, you know, reach out to a tribal friend if you got one, or somebody this month, and just recognize that this is Native American Heritage Month, so thank you.
I think we have one more.
Oh, sorry. Do you have one more there? Yeah. Does someone like to come on? Sorry, Mr. Perez.
You know, I'm Spanish and Cherokee, and when I was a kid and everybody was playing Cowboys and Indians, I always wanted to be the Indian. Of all the blood that runs through my body, my native blood is the most honorable blood I have, and we have several partial natives like myself on our team. Dave Waldschmidt is one, Griff Rattery, who you know, is one. I guess that's all I wanted to say. I have an affinity for Native Americans, and I know I don't look like one, but I feel like one.
Oh, and I'd like to thank you as well, with regard to what's going to be presented next, but I also wanted to highlight that the team has come to different rancherias and their cemeteries and conducted the service as well for a lot of the Native American veterans, so thank you for that as well. Did we find anyone on Zoom that possibly wanted to? All right, with that, we'll close this item and move on to the next one, which is our proclamation, Consideration of Proclamation Commending the Military Funeral Honors Team of Lake County, NB, Consideration of Participation in Operation Green Light. Supervisor Sabatier will be reading this proclamation.
So before I read the present, present the proclamation, need to get the approval from the board. Just to give a little bit of background, recently, my good friend Bob Hopkins passed away, and at his memorial at the American Legion, I was moved yet again by the Military Funeral Honors Team of Lake County, and recognized the amount of time that I've seen them in my short amount of years that I've been here in Lake County, they've probably made me cry more often than anyone else in my life, for good reasons, to remember the people we love, and they do more than just the Funeral Honors Team. They do a lot for our community, and I walked away from that memorial, speaking with Chris Talafaro, who works hand-in-hand with veterans as well, and said, I need to do a proclamation. I feel that this is a team that doesn't get enough acknowledgement for the work that they do in our community and how important they are to our community and how many people they touch. And so today is a proclamation that I've worked with Mr. Talafaro to bring to you, and I hope that we get the approval so that we can go ahead and move forward. Part B, by chance, as I was working on this, I received an email from the National Association of Counties. This started in New York State and is now grown to a national phenomenon where on Veterans' Day, for the week of Veterans' Day, I believe it's from the I believe it's from the 7th, so as of yesterday, all the way to the 13th, there is a request to light up our public facilities with green lights. And it's called Operation Green Light. And the idea behind Operation Green Light is to put a spotlight on veteran issues, veteran services, and the needs of our veterans in our communities. And so we do have the ability to have our lights on. I've worked with Mr. Ewing. By chance, there was a surprise purchase that was done, so they're ready for us. But I felt it was needed to have an approval from the board if we're going to change the lights on the courthouse, rather than somebody asking and saying Supervisor Sabatier made that happen. I think it would need approval from us. So today, asking for approval for part A and also approval for part B. And look forward to the approval.
All right. So you, the proclamation, did you want to just read that or?
That's the next item, 6.4.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I'm on 6.3, okay.
I was confused at first too, but I.
Supervisor Simon, did you have something?
We figured it out.
No, I was thinking we had to prove this in the consent agenda, but I understand now we did not. All right, okay.
All right.
It's a little different today.
Okay. So Operation Green Light, any comments about that? I'm pretty much in support of it, so. All right, I'll open it up to the public for any comments on this. Not seeing any, I'll bring it back. As I'm seeing on Zoom, there's no hands up. So I'll bring it back to the board for, it's action, right?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the proclamation commending the Military Funeral Honors Team of Lake County and approve the participation in Operation Green Light.
All right.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and motion carries. Our item 6.4 is Presentation of Proclamation commending the Military Funeral Honors Team of Lake County for their endless and thankless support of our military veterans and their families. And Supervisor Sabatier will be reading this proclamation.
And if Mr. Perez and his team can please come up for recognition, that would be great. And I tried to put all my thoughts in the proclamation, so I'll keep my other words as brief as possible. But thank you so much for being here today. And again, thank you for what you do, not just for veterans, but their families and to our community. I find your service to be very special. Proclamation commending the Military Funeral Honors Team of Lake County for the endless and thankless support of our military veterans and their families. Whereas in May 2001, the Military Funeral Honors Team of Lake County was certified as a provider in the Department of Defense Military Funeral Honors Program. And whereas the Military Funeral Honors Team of Lake County provides a three volley rifle salute, the playing of the taps, and the presentation of the flag to the next of kin, which is usually where I start crying is the taps and the flag, by the branch of military the veteran was in. And whereas in the last 21 years, this one's amazing, the Military Funeral Honors Team of Lake County has provided over 1,750 funerals for the veteran community of Lake County. Whereas the Military Funeral Honors Team of Lake County has participated for over one decade in the Clear Lake Flag Ceremony in Austin Park for both the raising of the flag around Memorial Day and the lowering of the flag around Veterans Day. And whereas the Military Funeral Honors Team of Lake County is made up of volunteers, all veterans of the Armed Forces of the United States. And whereas the Military Funeral Honors Team of Lake County provides their services without soliciting donations, but they do take donations if you offer. Whereas the Military Funeral Honors Team of Lake County offers numerous services for the community at large, such as the posting of the flag for schools, carrying the flag in parades, and so much more. Whereas the Lake County Board of Supervisors recognizes the sizable veteran population in the county and their vast contribution to our nation, all the way down to our communities. And whereas that sizable veteran population only emphasizes the importance of the role that is played by the Military Funeral Honors Team of Lake County in recognizing our veterans and their families, both in celebration and in mourning of our deceased veterans. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake recognizes the vast contributions of the Military Funeral Honors Team of Lake County for their unconditional support of our local veterans and their families during the most trying of times in recognizing their service and their courage. Passed and adopted this 8th day of November 2022 and signed by our chair.
Thank you very much. You know, I tell this to the team every year, and I'll tell it to you now. I've never been more honored to stand in line with these guys right here. This is not our whole team, but I was in the Marine Corps, so I was next to a lot of awesome people. These gentlemen, and we've had ladies on our team, I don't want to call them gentlemen, but it is my lifetime honor to stand with these guys. We've had guys on our team that had 10 minutes of energy left in their bodies, literally. We would take chairs out and they'd sit in the chair until it was time to stand and fire our rifles. They would stand up and fire and wait till taps was done and sit down again. That 10 minutes, they gave to somebody else. What more could you do? And you're right. I've been on the team 11 years now, and one of these guys has been on longer than me. I think he's been on about 50 years. But I bet you there isn't one of us that during taps or the presentation of flags doesn't shed a tear, no matter how long we've been doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to say anything?
Thank you so much.
Just like to add, if there's any veterans tuning in or listening, it would be an honor to reach out to Mr. Perez as at times they would need some other volunteers for veterans. Just wanted to give that shout out. I know Bob's asked me before. And so I'm going to have to set up some time to work with him, get, you know, back up to par. It's been a while since I've worked with the rifle. And so, and anybody else that's a veteran, it would be, it probably helps some of these gentlemen out. I'll call them gentlemen. And I think it'd be very well welcomed. So is there anyone else that has? I see some people that would like to speak. Please come up to the microphone and.
Nancy Mitchell, County Veteran Service Office. I would like to invite all public to the Veterans Day Ceremony this Friday, 11 o'clock, Canakdi Vista Casino. And you can actually watch this team in action.
All right, I seen a hand in the back of the room. Is there? No, oh, okay, I thought I seen. I thought Denver had his hand up. Yes, Saul, please come up.
Good morning, Board and everyone else present. I'm Saul Sanabria, Veteran Service Officer for this beautiful county. And words really cannot describe the level of time and effort that goes into each and every one of those moments where this professional team makes the honor of a presentation of flags and everything else of the respect that each and every one of the families and members of the community deserve. Without going any further, all I can say is.
He's getting there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, anybody else that would like to speak about this item on the agenda? Hearing none or seeing no hands up, I'll bring it back to the board. It looks like Supervisor Sabatier would like to.
And similar to the Veterans Day event also, I know on November 15th, the lowering of the flag in Clear Lake will be occurring. Unfortunately, it will be happening on a Tuesday, so I will not be able to be there, but that is a beautiful ceremony as well. And because Veterans Day is coming up this Friday, and I've already spoken with our CAO, we'll be working on a press release in order to highlight Operation Green Light and explain it and provide some details on where veterans can find information and services available to them. So we'll make sure that that comes out. And again, thank you so much for all coming today.
And Bob, would it be okay if I gave out your number in case there's veterans listening that would like to touch base with you and volunteer?
Sure.
Okay. Bob's number is 707-277-9401. Again, reach out to Bob as a veteran and offer your services. We all were trained the same way when it comes to the rifles and conducting this ceremony. So thank you again. All right. Oh, sorry, Supervisor Green.
Yeah, just very quickly, I do want to thank the team. I was at the event last year at the casino, and I believe is the first one we'd had for a while because of COVID. And I was very moved by that ceremony, so I want to echo. Yeah, you'll be shedding tears when you go to this, but what struck me about last year's ceremony was how happy it was too. It was really a celebration of life. It was a celebration of service to our country. And those who have passed before us were honored appropriately. And I think also the younger people who are in attendance learned valuable lessons about the importance of public service. So I would encourage those people who think Friday would just be, you know, a bunch of dusty old veterans, maybe. But I think there'll be young people there. I think there will be words of inspiration. And both of my parents served in the Air Force, so I am proud of your service here today. It's very helpful to the community. And I encourage everyone to come out Friday. Thank you.
Yes. All open public input back up.
I would like to say one more thing. You know, Lake County has the largest veteran community of, per capita of any county in California. So I guess that's why we're so busy.
Thank you for that note and information. With that, I'll close public input, bring it back to the board. And I think we've covered. And so thank you again. And we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our 6.5, our public hearing continued from October 18th, 2022, hearing of appeal notice of violation and notice of nuisance in order to abate property owner Thomas Carter, location 1622 Hunter Point Road, Upper Lake, California. This item will be presented by the Community Development Director, Maria Turner, and Code Enforcement Manager, Marcus Beltramo.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are ready to present today. However, I wanted to bring it to the board's attention that the representative for the appellant did ask for another continuance. She's rather under the weather by the sound of her voicemail.
I seen that. And I know it's in my district. I'm okay if it doesn't pose any issues in regards to hearing or notices or anything like that. I would ask Anita Grant if that would be a possibility.
It shouldn't pose a problem.
Okay.
If, is there a date? Is there a date in mind?
I don't believe a date was given by the appellants as to when they'd be available. We'd obviously like to move forward with this as soon as practical.
Perhaps two weeks because she also noted that she's experiencing flooding near her house due to the rain, so we might want to wait for it to dry out a little.
So maybe the 22nd.
So we do have another appeal scheduled for November 22nd at 9:30. If the board wishes to hear two possibly in-depth appeals on that date, we would like, we don't have an issue with that.
Two of us aren't going to be here on, oh, wait, the 22nd, yeah, we were. Yeah, okay. Right.
Do we feel that's possible? I know we have, I think, another one today too, so. Yeah? You okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right, so we'll go ahead in 10:30. Does that conflict, Johanna?
We need a motion, correct?
9:35?
So for the appeal that we scheduled for November 22nd at 9:30, that could be something that takes, could be at length, depending on the appellant. So five minutes may not be sufficient time as the appellant may want to advocate his case and his issues during the appeal. And I think we just, it'd be prudent to schedule appropriately.
All right, that works.
Okay.
And so what I'll do is I'll open up to the public briefly to ensure that if there's anyone that was here to speak on that and or anything of that nature. And I'm not seeing any hands. Oh, there is. Joan, would you like to come up, state your name for the record? And we'll hear your concerns.
I am Joan Moss. I read the letter that Tom Carter wrote as part of his appeal. Tom Carter was a hero, and he still is a hero. In my book, I just want you to know that time has passed, prices for the permits have increased, but he helped many, many people to rebuild after the fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Any other person from public input that'd like to speak? Not seeing anyone on Zoom, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to continue this public hearing to November 22nd at, did we say 9:45?
Yes.
At 9:45 a.m.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you. And so we are on the next item, which is, I think, yeah, we're at it. So our 9:45 is consideration of appeal, Planning Commission's denial of major use permit, UP 20-90, and initial study IS 20-109 for 1.18 acres of mixed light cannabis cultivation, applicant Cresta Properties LLC, 6267 Kelsey Creek Drive and 6245 Gold Dust Drive, Kelseyville APNs 007-013-22 and -23. And with that, we'll give the floor back to you, Director Turner.
Thank you. This appeal is before you today because the Planning Commission, the commissioners were unable to make a motion to take action.
Ms. Grant, one second. Go ahead. I'm sorry about that.
Testimony under oath.
Okay. And so you should do that first then. Okay, Johanna, can you please conduct that and then I'll?
With your right hand raised, you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Yes.
Can I, can I interrupt? I think there's some people in this room that will want to testify and maybe make comments because I know I saw some of them in our Planning Commission. So want to make sure that we're asking everyone on Zoom and everyone in the public that if they wish to testify. Not sure that that was made clear.
Yeah, okay. There is, oh, wait, there is Richard Dierum. If you'd like to, if you can conduct that one more time. If you're here on this item, please stand, raise your right hand, and we'll conduct the, one more swear in for that. Oh, there they are. All right.
Okay. So do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes?
I do.
All right.
Thank you. So at its October 13th meeting, the Planning Commission did consider this permit application. They were unable to take action. And because of that, according to our code, it was an automatic denial with an automatic appeal to the, to the board. During, during the presentation, it was noted that there were a number of inaccuracies within the staff report, which made it very challenging. So in the meantime, since then, during the appeal, the corrections to the staff report from the Planning Commission are noted in your appeal staff report or staff memorandum. We are ready to present today, if it pleases the board. However, an alternative would be to remand it back to the Planning Commission. the board. However, an alternative would be to remand it back to the Planning Commission with the hopes that we would have more than three commissioners in attendance at that hearing, and the inaccuracies in the staff report were, would also be corrected, so that it would be, it would be a much better presentation for them to consider at that time.
Vice Chair Piska?
I think it's appropriate for it to go back to the Planning Commission and go through the process, so I hope that that's what we can do today.
Yeah. Supervisor Green, and Supervisor Simon?
I would generally agree, except I don't have any assurance that we'll have a full Planning Commission at the next hearing. If, in fact, the staff report's been corrected and we're able to go today, I would like to hear from the applicant if they feel like they would be disadvantaged by the time it takes to go back to PC with an uncertain fate based on, I'm the new guy here, but I don't know. If there's been attendance problems with PC, I don't want to remand it without having an assurance that we'll get a firm decision at that time. So, perhaps staff could talk to the likelihood of a full Planning Commission greeting this issue before we remand it.
Supervisor Simon?
I would agree that I think remanding it back to the Planning Commission is the place it needs to go, so they have that opportunity. So, those are my thoughts on it.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I appreciate that that is the option that we're given, as I think that is the option that should have happened in the first place. If you don't have the appropriate information to deny or approve something with not a very clear picture of what the project is or what the impacts are, that the applicant needs to be given a fair opportunity to be given the right information, and that the Planning Commission gets to make those decisions. I think that that's the right place to put it back into. I had hoped that it would have been a continuance from the Planning Commission, but I think that this does exactly what should have happened in the first place. So, appreciate that option.
We will definitely make an effort to reach out to the Planning Commissioners to confirm their attendance. However, we can't make them be there.
Right. Just to add to that, these policies for the Planning Commission would help to get those. We've been talking about that for quite some time, and we're looking at ensuring that they might want to revamp those, because there's nothing, basically, holding them to an attendance factor in that document. So, Ms. Grant, I don't know if you wanted to add on that, but...
I'm sure Ms. Turner can speak to this too, but the Planning Commission's already considered updates to the bylaws, and those will be coming back to your board for review and consideration shortly.
All right, thank you, Ms. Grant.
They reviewed a working draft of the bylaw amendments at their last meeting. The final draft is going before them on the November 17th meeting, and will come to your board directly after that.
All right, thank you. All right. Does that help for assurance? All right, I'll open it up to some of the folks that are here. Would that be ideal? If there's anyone that would like to speak on this, that's here, that swore in, please come up to the microphone. And if not, I'll look on Zoom. I don't see any hands up. Because I know that, Mr. Green, you had a request to see if there's anyone here that would, you mentioned something along the lines of...
Well, just if the applicant was present, if the applicant was here and ready to proceed, and we were ready to proceed, I would say, yeah, we could kick it back, but we are fully entitled to review this, to the best of my knowledge. If the applicant is here and is fine with the continuance, or remand back to PC, that's fine. But if the applicant is here and ready to proceed, I'd like to hear that. So if the applicant is here, one or the other, we'd appreciate hearing your thoughts on it.
All right, sir, come on up to the microphone.
Good morning. I'm the applicant for Cresta Properties. And we're here, but my consultant is not here. And we really appreciate if you can go back to the PC Commission, because I think we need a better, better review, let me put it that way. And I know that the planning staff, they did really, really good job for a second time. So, I mean, we can go now if you want to, but I think it's really need to go to the, to the PC Commission for a second time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can meet the noticing requirements to add this to our December meeting.
Okay. All right. If there's not anyone else from the public that'd like to speak, I don't see anyone on Zoom, I'll bring it back to the board. For action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we return the application to the Planning Commission for their consideration.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So that will go back to the Planning Commission, and we'll see at that time how that works. Thank you very much. Let's see, we got our next item, which is, oh, that's a 10:30. Well, we're at 9:55.
We have the consent item.
Oh, yeah, there we go. So we will go back and conduct the 5.8. A, waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.3, as it is not in the public interest due to determination that competitive bidding would produce no economic benefit. And B, approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Mountain G Enterprises, MGE, for consulting services related to the development of hazardous tree removal project for the purpose of submitting an application to the state for grant funds, and authorize the chair to sign the agreement. Supervisor Sabatier, you pulled this, and I wanted to see if Director De Leone might be online, or, yeah, I think...
Yes, good morning, board. I am online. I'm unable to turn on my video. It's telling me the host has stopped that. So, if you want to entertain a five-minute break, I'll be happy to come down and, and present this in person, or otherwise, I can continue with no video.
I think we can take the break. We'll accommodate for that break. So what we'll do is, we'll take a break till 10:05, and we'll come back at that time and continue with this item.
That's all.
All right. We're ready when you are, sir.
Blue light, we're starting something.
All right, looks like we're, we're back, well, back from the break, so we'll go ahead and move back on to our 5.8. Do I have to read it out again? Maybe I should, just because we're coming out of break. We were, this 6, 5.8, I'm sorry, waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.3, as it is not in the public interest due to the determination that competitive bidding would produce a, produce no economic benefit. And B, approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Mountain G Enterprises, Incorporated, MGE, for consulting services related to the development of hazardous tree removal project for the purpose of submitting an application to the state for grants, and authorize the chair to sign the agreement. Director De Leone?
Good morning. Thank you. Perhaps a little history here, you know, for the past several months, there's been a lot of discussion about an application to the state for hazard tree removal. As you recall, we were successful in obtaining a grant for an emergency evacuation route planning grant for the Sota Bay Corridor. But there's been a lot of interest in, in an overall countywide hazardous tree removal project. We met once with the state, CalOES. They gave us a little background about the, the opportunity and the grant funds that are available. And frankly, I thought it was best to, to bring in a consultant to put a project together. It's a sizable project. There's thousands of trees. We did a, a rough windshield survey, and I think we came up with about 4,000 trees and, and growing. And, and so, looked around, talked to a number of different counties. Placer County hired a contractor to do a very similar project with, with the same funding source. And so I reached out to the agency that, that, this consultant, MGE, and they gave us a pretty nice resume about all the things that they'd done. They worked well with Placer County. And so, I asked them for a proposal to put a project and a cost estimate together for the purposes of making an application to the state of California, CalOES, for this project. I can probably defer to Supervisor Piska to talk about more of the details and, and the timing. But, you know, the funding is available. Other counties are, are pursuing the funding, so we, we decided to come to your board with this, this option to, in lieu of going out for RFP and, and taking the probably 60 days to put something together and then advertise it, we just decided to propose waiving the formal bidding and hiring MGE for this first phase of the project. What would likely happen, and I mentioned it in the memo, is if the county's successful in obtaining the grant, that we would go out for bid, or RFP for proposals to put the project together. And, and we would do a competitive process at that time, because that project, that consultant's contract would be significantly higher than, than this one. They are proposing a time and materials contract, not to exceed $30,000 to put the application materials together. We did some rough estimates with the state. If we had 4,000 trees and, and the state said that on average, it's, you know, you could be up to $3,000 a tree, you know, there's, there's 12 million. So, if you use the industry standard adage of 10% for engineering services for contract costs, you know, you're looking at a consultant's contract of 1.2 million. So, sizable contract, that would be in the future. But for this phase, it's just making the application to the state, CalOES. And so with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, no, the, I agree with the idea of going out to a consultant, making sure we get somebody with the expertise that can go ahead and take a look at the issue that we have here locally with our tree mortality. My only disagreement is the waiving of the formal bidding process. This has been an ongoing issue in the state of California for at least five to more years, because of the previous drought, where it happened a little bit more in, in previous years in those counties to the south of us. I, I would like to see a bidding process in order to ensure that we have the best qualified agency looking at this issue, rather than just a lateral coming from Placer County. I believe, and I don't know, there was an assumption that they did their due diligence, but I, I just want to make sure that we do our due diligence, especially the level of expertise could mean the difference of millions of dollars of what the next step looks like. And so, I want to make sure that we have what we believe is the best suited agency to consult and provide a plan, so that we're not asking the state for more than we need to, or less than we need to. So that is why I disagree with part A, but definitely agree with the other part of the process for part B.
I'll just point out that we've been having weekly meetings since early July. Is that correct? I think, yeah.
Yes.
Trying to figure out the best way to move forward through this. And with the amount of fires over the last few years, and the amount of salvage work, it's been difficult to find contractors. And actually, this contractor, this consultant, went dark on us for quite a long time, because they were moved over to the mosquito fire for that work. So this, it is difficult to find these consultants. And time is of the essence. We're now going into the storm season on the mountain, which is arguably more dangerous than fire season. When you look at the amount of hazard trees precariously hanging over the highways and in our public right of ways and in our easements, and this is a public safety issue that we have to move quickly on. And once we have this plan developed, you know, we will be able to be going through that RFP process, hopefully, more smoothly. But it has been difficult to even find this one consultant.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, been involved in multiple meetings, you know, on this issue, and clearly hear your concerns, Supervisor Sabatier, but I really think, we've talked about this before as we move through this process, of, you know, being able to get in line and be able to make sure that we're prepared when those funds are coming down. So I think this is the way that we need to move forward at this time. You know, as it goes on, obviously, we'll gain the expertise. We're all, we just got the ingress and egress, the first grant for Lake County last year, and, you know, we'll be working on that as we move through the next, you know, open season here, which is the spring and fall. So, you know, I'm in support. I clearly hear, we will go, when we go for the large contract, out to the bidding process, to the RFP. But I think right now, we just, time is of the essence. We've had the multiple meetings. When we talked about the numbers that potentially could cost us, the $12 million number, let's just start with that. Say, hey, we really got to get moving here and get us an opportunity, because there is going to be some, you know, maybe potential fronting of funds, or something that we need to consider, and we need to be in line to have the best plan to do that. So I'm, I'm in support of it. You know, hopefully, as we're moving through all other departments, because we know how tasked you are with many other issues, with roads and everything else that's going on, this consultant opportunity is the way to move forward, to get done, what we think will help us move forward to protect our constituents in the future. So, I'm in support of it at this time.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for pulling this. I'm the new kid on the block, so I need to learn RFPs in general, and then to the specific concerns I've heard here. So, one, I was stricken that we're even up here at all on a 30,000 contract. That probably has to do, we have a 25,000 threshold for RFPs. Okay, that seems awfully low to me. But we are dealing with it the way it is today. I certainly appreciate the comments about the scarcity of people that would bid on an RFP, even if we put one out. That's true across multiple departments. I know it was a big problem in DSS when I worked there. And the expertise of this particular consultant is, is laid out very nicely on page five. They have very recent experience, including here in Lake County. But in the findings that we're going to make, assuming we all see, agree to go, I didn't see a need-for-speed exemption that would allow us to waive competitive bidding. So, is there a need, need-for-speed exemption? And, and again, I'm not familiar with our ordinance. You cited the 38.3, couldn't find that. But I know we passed an ordinance about a year ago that kind of clarified what we would put out to bid and how we would do that. So, definitely going to support this moving forward. I just want to make sure we do it with appropriate findings. I'm not aware of a need-for-speed exemption. So, thank you.
Ms. Grant, did you have something, or? No, I thought, I thought you were.
I believe that it's one of the criteria that can be considered in terms of not in the public interest under 38.2. And that's in Article 2, under purchasing of the county code. The complete site wasn't provided in the memo. I think it's just commonly referred to as 38.2. But your board determines what criteria and factors you consider in determining not, or, or whether it is not in the public interest. So, I think all of those types of factors can come within your board's consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
And we, we did pass a local emergency six months ago, so this is urgent, and it does need our attention.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, just a clarification with what Director De Leone said. Did you say 10%? Has that changed? I thought it was 25% from the state for the CalOES program.
No, he's talking about the...
No, I was talking about a project. I was trying to give you an idea of the scope of, of what the consultant's contract may be, should we be approved by the state of California for grant funds?
Gotcha.
If we use a $12 million project, the engineering typically is about 10% of your construction cost. So, you know, using that standard, the contract that we would be procuring for, for the management of the project would, would be roughly 1.2 million. So, that, that's where those numbers came into. Those were completely separate from the grant funds and what the state requires for local match and all that. That's, that was completely separate.
That's where I got confused. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. So I'll go ahead and open up to public input on this item. If anybody would like to speak on this, I see we have someone. If you'd like to come to the microphone, state your name for the record. There's another person too. So, come up to the microphone, state your name for the record. I'll start your three minutes, and we'll go from there.
I've looked at this and I've studied it. Under the Freedom of Information Act, I want to have all public information about PG&E's enhanced vegetation management program.
This is not about PG&E.
I know. And what I'm telling you is that the general public, such as me, are going to get confused over the hazardous tree removal and PG&E's program. If you can, if I could just continue my, what I'm saying, please?
Sure.
I get three minutes, right? And the names of the contracted companies for removing trees along Wildcat Road, Loggers Unlimited, MGE. If the trucks that say MGE are subcontracted under PG&E, why is Lake County now drawing up another contract for more work? What is happening to our letters of complaint? And I'm glad that we do have a place to bring them now, Ms. Pyska. We do have a place to complain. And what is the name of the lawyer the county hired three weeks ago through the county council's office under a $50,000 ceiling? I have a document that I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, and this is online on the website of Lake County Public Health, thanks to your influence. You found it. Community experiences and perceptions of geothermal venting and emergency preparedness in Lake County, California. This is already published. You can look it up on the Lake County Health Department. November 2012. There are other problems besides the drought that are in Lake County. And before you get a contract going, I want you to read this document. 51 pages. It's called a Casper. It's put out by the Public Health Department and the CDC. Ray Ramensky, Karen Tate. Very important information about Lake County venting and methane and induced volcanic action of the geysers. This is facts that have not been brought out to the public, and I think that the public should be aware of everything that's documented before they apply for a grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to clarify what it is we're talking about today.
By all means.
This Disaster Act program is only for standing dead trees. And we have standing dead trees along our roadways that pose a public safety risk to all of our residents. And it is our responsibility to make sure that we are managing our public right of ways. And the trees that are dead have to be removed and taken down. And we cannot take any other trees down under this program that are not certified to be dead by an arborist. Like, this program has very strict parameters. So it is only for removing dead trees that are certified by an arborist. And then this program will reimburse us for 75% of the cost of that tree removal project. So it's only dead trees from our right of ways around our infrastructure.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. I'm not seeing anyone else come up. Okay, come on up to the microphone and just know that Supervisor Pyska had just mentioned that's what this is about.
Yeah, okay. My name is Natasha Robinson. MGE did come down our road and mark many trees for PG&E to be cut and worked hand-in-hand with Atlas. And I'll say they removed probably if not hundreds, maybe even a thousands, thousands perhaps, of trees that were way beyond the line. And I know this isn't about PG&E. I'm just saying, I don't quite think this company is a very good company. And I think that giving them a streamlined smacks of favoritism and even worse, a kickback. I think you should do the proper progress and get a proper company in there. I guess they're proper. I mean, they've got all the right wording and whatnot so that they can get the contracts. And you say it's only going to be dead trees. Well, PG&E says right on their website, dead, dying, or sick trees, and they removed that, you know, hundreds of trees that weren't. I want to know, is there going to be oversight this time? Where's the oversight coming from? Please have some...
I can tell you that this contract that we're looking at is only for the application. It is not for the tree work.
Okay, I think you should get...
So it's only the application that we're going to be submitting to OES.
And $4,000 a tree? I mean, there's profit to take out trees that shouldn't be removed. I mean, when you have that, and that's the problem with the other situation. It's a, you get paid for every tree. So of course you have a tree that might have a little yellow spot on it. Oh, it's dying, you know? It's diseased. It's got a little yellow mold spot on it. And so what I'm trying to say is, so far, this company has not been holding to the criteria of PG&E. There's been no oversight, and I'm really concerned that we're going to be facing the same thing with these people. They come in and they mark everything they can because it's for profit. It's for money. It's for funds. And our mountain is going to suffer again so that they can cut down anything and everything to make a buck. And I really see this as a problem. This is really geared against the environment. It's a losing battle, literally for us, because there's money involved and profit involved to clearcut this mountain, take as many trees out. And you say it's going to be dead? I don't believe it because they lied last time. Why wouldn't they lie again? And the arborists? I didn't, their arborists were a joke, quite honestly. Funny, my arborists came up with quite a different scenario than their arborists. And a lot of the guys out there marking trees had no clue what they were doing. They were just like, well, we've been told to mark if we see anything, a dead branch or if it's all crooked. You know, I don't think there's a straight tree in the whole forest. So like, you're going to do that criteria? Yeah, you're going to make your money. Oh, yeah. The money will be flowing, for sure. And we, the people who live on that mountain, are going to have to be sit there and watch you guys or whoever this company is make their money.
Okay. I just want to be very clear. We're not making money, we're spending money. We're going to be spending a lot of money to cut down the dead...
Somebody's making that money. Somebody's making...
But this...
We've heard, we've heard that. I have, go ahead.
Yeah, this application is going to be prepared by this company. And then there will be an RFP that will go out, will find the contractor who will actually be doing that tree work. This company, this is the contract for designing the application and designing the project, and that is all. And I think there's a difference. PG&E has several different vegetation programs going, so I think there's some confusion there. This is very clear. The tree has to be dead. Has to be dead or it can't be removed and can't be reimbursed. But I don't want to get in an argument with you about this right now. I'm just laying out for the board what this looks like.
Okay, I'm just going to say really quickly.
No, you've had a lot to say. All right, Michael, I don't have anyone else from the public that wants to speak? All right, I don't see anyone online. Michael, I'll start with you. Supervisor Simon, you can go next after him.
Yeah, I just want to appreciate the chair's patience in dealing with public comments that very clearly have little to nothing to do with the agenda item before us today. I would encourage people to actually read the agenda items and limit their comments accordingly. So although we did accept public comment on this item by the GAVL, we probably wouldn't have gone that far. And I will accept the comments for what they are worth here. You talk about some tangential report from 10 years ago that has nothing to do with this. I will accept the comment, but I will not act upon it. You come in here and do character assassination on a company for something that has nothing to do with the agenda item today? I will have to listen to it if nobody interrupts, but I'm not bound to give it any weight or credence. So thank you so much for the public comments, but no, thank you. They were not on point. We will act on what is before us today. Thank you.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, just going to reiterate one more time. This is the beginning steps we talk about for safe ingress and egress throughout the county, looking at that process for the dead and dying trees. And we'll continue to do that since the valley fire, obviously, and the multiple disasters after with the fires. This is a challenge in making sure that folks can get in and out safely. We have communities with one way in, one way out. That's really going to be a focus as we move forward. So, you know, I just want to reiterate that. This, clearly here, you know, the concerns about the trees that, you know, are questionable, but these are dead and dying trees that may impede folks from getting out during a disaster. So obviously, going to move forward with this, hopefully today and get an approval.
All right. With that, is there any other comments? If not, we're looking for action.
There's nothing further, Chair. I move that the Board of Supervisors waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the determination that competitive bidding would produce no economic benefit. And B, approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Mountain G Enterprises, Inc., MGE, for consulting services related to the development of a hazardous tree removal project for the purpose of submitting an application to the state for grant funds. And authorize the Chair to sign the agreement.
Do they need to be separate items?
Okay.
Yeah, but usually it's the person, it's the supervisor who brings the item.
In the district.
In the district, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
So are we doing separate items, Anita, or is it one?
I do want to clarify, this shows that it's from Public Works, and I believe this is a multi-district issue and not just a singular district issue.
Correct, but it is something that I've been working on for several months.
It's up to your board. You can do them singularly or you can do it together. If you do it together, obviously, there's a risk someone will agree with only one part.
Right, that's my concern.
I'll withdraw my motion.
All right. And so, looking for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 and is not in the public interest due to the determination that competitive bidding would produce no economic benefit.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Mountain G Enterprises, MGE, for consulting services related to the development of a hazardous tree removal project for the purpose of submitting an application to the state for grant funds and authorize the Chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Director DeLeon? All right. Let's see. So I think we are at, what's that? Oh, that's right. We have 5.6. So I'm going to reopen consent, the consent agenda, and I think I'm going to need an action for that.
I move to reopen the consent agenda.
Second.
Which was the 5.1 through 5.7.
Yes.
Second.
And so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and motion carries. And with that, it looks like we have to open 5.6. Is there something else I need to do in that or can I just open 5.6, Ms. Grant?
You can open 5.6. But if you're removing it from consent in order to have that discussion, you have to go back and reapprove the remaining ones, which would, as Supervisor Sabatier indicated, eliminate 5.8. You've just addressed that.
Okay.
And eliminate this one.
All right. So approval of the consent agenda first and foremost, then if there's anything to be pulled. Supervisor Sabatier?
Obviously, we're pulling 5.6, and I move to approve items 5.1 through 5.5 and 5.7.
So I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and motion carries. With that, we will conduct 5.6, adopt resolution appointing directors of certain special districts' boards in lieu of holding a general district election on November 8, 2022. And I'll go ahead and give the floor to Johanna.
So the resolution wasn't attached to the agenda. I think all the letters were, but not the resolution itself.
Didn't catch that.
Here is the resolution. It's just, this happens every year. It's normal. All right.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I have a question for Johanna. I see a lot of names on there. Are we approving of those names? Because the recommendations was only for, like, specific individuals.
Um...
Because like, I'm looking at the Lake County Fire Protection District. I believe there was only Mary Benson that was being approved for no election. I didn't see anything else. At least in the recommendation coming from that board.
I'm not sure. How about...
Lakeport Fire appointees elected.
Here, I'll send it to everyone. I'll forward it. Maybe we could take a break and I can call Lordess.
Let's take a five-minute break then. All right. We'll come back at 10:40. I think we're ready to get back into session here. Come back from our break. It looks like we are on 5.6. Yeah, 5.6. Read it one more time. Adopt resolution appointing directors of certain special district boards in lieu of holding a general district election on November 8, 2022. And Johanna and Maria, I will open the floor to either of you.
Hi, this is Maria, registered voters. How are you? Good morning.
Good morning, Maria.
So the resolution that Anita approved asked to form are the people that went through the process of filing their declaration of candidacy. And then the people on the memo are, there was, if you notice on the resolution, there's a couple of blank spaces for certain districts. These are the recommendations from the districts that if you, the board approves them, then these people will be also appointed in addition to the ones on the resolution. So those names will need to be typed onto the appropriate district. So for instance, Kelly County Water District, if you go to section, or letter K on the resolution, the second page.
All right.
We have the two people that, like I said, went through the process of filing their declaration of candidacy. So if the board were to approve all these recommendations from the districts, then Scott's name would also be on there as, on number three, and then he would serve a full four-year term.
All right. Thank you for that. Supervisor Sabatier?
Question for Ms. Grant. So since the names are not on the resolution in our motion, do we have to spell out exactly the additions to or as recommended by the special districts? What would be the best way to do so? Because the names from the recommendations that we have from the special districts are not on the resolution currently. And so I feel like we need to add the, do we just say as recommended by all the special districts or do we have to go by district by name?
I would recommend that you specify who's being added to the resolution under which district, just so that the record is clear.
Okay. Thank you for that.
All right. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a quick question. I guess the record would be clear if we narrated it, but as far as the resolution itself not being available in the packet and now the proposal to make some additions, are we on a hard deadline to adopt this resolution today on or prior to Election Day or can we just clean it up and bring it back next week?
I, we've always presented it on Election Day. I don't have the code section right in front of me, but it's supposed to be done within the timeframe. I don't have that in front of me. Normally, like I said, we present it to the board this way. I know Lordess had sent the resolution to Johanna, but I don't know what happened.
Yeah, it's just a transparency question. This is all very run-of-the-mill stuff, but we were not able to present this run-of-the-mill stuff in an organized fashion to the public. And just like we want people to have confidence in our free and fair elections, I think we want to have confidence in the appointments that are taking place in lieu of election. So I don't know if it's that Elections Code 1015 that has any date attached to it, Anita, or if there might be something else. That's my only observation. If we have to handwrite stuff in, we can certainly do it today, but I think we can do it cleaner and more openly in a week.
We've always submitted it in this manner where then if the board approves through recommendations, then the resolution, they would add the names of those members and then, like I said, the board would approve it. But let me look at the code section really quick. I'm sorry, it's been really busy today, so...
We understand. We understand. And as we're waiting for that, I'm gonna open it up to the public briefly. So if there's anyone from the public that wants to speak on 5.6. No one in the chambers wants to speak, and I don't see any hands up in Zoom. I will close public input at this time, bring it back to the board while we're continuing to research this, some of these specifications and tensions.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, by all means.
I don't know if Mrs. Grant has access to this code section, but just that we can print her, 10515 says, if a petition signed by 10% of the... Has not been presented to the office or conducting the election, here she shall submit a certificate of these facts to the supervising authority, and request that the supervising authority at a regular or special meeting held prior to the Monday before the first Friday in December, appoint to the office or offices the person or persons. So I guess we could bring it back next.
Twenty-second.
Tuesday.
The 22nd, you said?
Or next Tuesday, the 14th?
It would have to be the 22nd. We won't have a full board, we'll have three board members here next week, if that's possible, but if, we could do next week?
It says prior to the Monday before the first Friday in December.
But it's, I think Ms. Grant said that we could possibly do it next week, so I'll look at the board, if we have, since... Okay, we will do the 22nd.
Okay.
Register voters of Aldez, does that sound okay?
Yeah, that's fine with me. So what do I need to give to you again?
So I think we'll be looking for, go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
If I may give it a shot, I think just the addition of the names that are recommended by the special districts onto the resolution, so that the resolution we approve is transparent as to exactly what is being approved, rather than kind of trying to put it together ourselves. Personally, I'm willing to move forward with that today, but if the rest of the board allows to wait, then that's fine with me as well.
Okay, because like I said, in the past, we've never added the names. It's always been the board, put to the board, add the names once the board approves the recommendations. They just type them into that section. But if you're, okay, I can go ahead and add those names.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I'm the same as Supervisor Sabatier, prepared after the conversations we've had today to move forward. So.
I'm good either way. If we want to move forward today, I'm good with that, but if we, if there's, it looks like we have a majority that's willing to move forward today, so is there anyone, I know that there's, anyone else that has any comments about this? All right, if anybody's willing to move forward today, or if we want to postpone it till the 22nd, I'll leave that to whoever makes the motion, and we'll go forward from here.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna try to do this correctly, as Ms. Grant offered for us to do. I offer the resolution with the addition of Scott Hopkins to letter K? Okay, just name the district and the name? Okay, that's so much easier. So I offer the resolution with the addition of Caliomi County Water District Scott Hopkins for a four-year term, Canockdy County Water District Aduri Barber for four-year term, Upper Lake County Water District Richard Samandi, four-year term, Villa Blue Estates Water District Gary Pierce for a four-year term, Villa Blue Estates Water District Christian Montgomery for two-year term, Lake County Fire Protection District Mary Benson for a four-year term, and South Lake County Fire Protection District Bryce Stevenson for a four-year term.
Resolution.
Do I need a second?
I think it's a resolution, yeah, the resolution. So resolution has been offered. Johanna?
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
No.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Handel.
Yes. Motion carries, or the resolution passed. That's a better statement, sorry. All right, so next is the...
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Maria, very much for your assistance on this, and, you know, hang in there for today. I know it's a very busy day for you, and we appreciate your work greatly.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Have a good day.
And team.
Thank you.
All right. And so it looks like we are at our 6.7, public hearing continued from October 25, 2022, consideration of proposed rezone 22-01 and general plan amendment GPA 22-01, applicant Valerie Pang, project located at 11377, Highway 29, Lower Lake APN 049300-02, and our community development department and our manager, I mean, I'm sorry, not manager, director, Maria Turner, and Eric Porter, the planner.
Hello again.
Hello.
Looks like the top one, yeah. The item we're bringing before you today is consideration of a proposed rezone and general plan amendment, taking the property in Lower Lake, which was formerly the Bikram Yoga Studio. It's currently zoned C3, and this rezone proposes changing that single parcel to C2. I will hand it over to Eric Porter to present the project.
Thanks, Maria. Good morning, Supervisors. Yes, Director Turner indicated this request for a rezone originally came before the board on October 25, continued until November 8. Next slide, please. So the property itself is about 6,100 square feet in size, it's zone C3, and the entire area around it, on this side of the highway is also zone C3. There are existing C3 uses adjacent to the subject site. In a moment, I'll show you why the site is awkwardly positioned. There's no direct highway access to the site. Next slide, please. That shows you a zoning map. The white arrow depicts the 6,100 square foot lot. The lot's currently developed with a 2,000 square foot building that would be used to sell retail cannabis. Unfortunately, it's requiring several properties that you have to pass by in order to get to this facility, and the properties are developed with, I would say, heavy commercial uses, for lack of a better word, auto repair, mini storages, truck yards, and so the site itself to staff seemed very unlikely to support a rezone. Next slide, please. So this is a more accurate depiction of just how you get to the site. You have to go on Clayton Creek Road. There's no direct highway access to the site, and again, you have to pass through several other properties on a shared access easement in order to access this 2,000 square foot C3 zone building. Next slide, please. So there are some differences between the service commercial district and the general plan, and this would require a general plan amendment versus the community commercial district. There are a few similar uses that are allowed in both districts, however, for the most part, they support different types of uses. C3 service commercial is intended for heavier commercial uses such as auto repair, mini storages are allowed. The types of uses that you don't generally find in the community commercial district, which are intended to support more pedestrian, bicycle, and community commercial type uses for neighborhoods, whereas the C3 zone is not that. It's intended for heavier commercial uses. Next slide, please. So regarding the zoning ordinance, this project represents spot zoning, and that was clear to staff, especially when you look at the overall zoning map. This would be a very different category of zoning amidst C3 zone. The project we found has potential to create incompatible uses. Project has unknown traffic consequences, and I'll get to that in just a moment. Retail cannabis tends to generate a lot more trips than, say, an average pharmacy. Next slide, please. So again, spot zoning, any use allowed in the C2 commercial district could locate at this site. Applicant has indicated that they want to sell retail cannabis. I'm told there are other retail cannabis outlets in Lower Lake already. I have not been to them, I haven't seen them, and so I can't confirm their existence other than anecdotally. Potential impacts to existing C3 service commercial establishments are unknown, and that could have to do with anything from traffic to compatibility of uses, lack of pedestrian amenities leading to that site, and so forth. Next slide, please. The traffic impacts, and I thought this was interesting, I wasn't aware of this when I was doing the research on it, but retail cannabis tend to generate five times the number of trips that commercial pharmacies generate. This is from the ITE Manual, Ninth Edition. I don't know where the readings were taken from, it may well be from a metropolis area with quite a bit larger population bases, but the outcome based on these analyses of different sites are that retail cannabis does generate about five times the number of trips that a retail pharmacy would generate. Next slide, please. So, we had to make a couple of findings at staff level. General plan amendments had three specific findings that needed to be made. Project is consistent with the general plan and applicable area plan, establishment of the use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood, and that the project will not result in significant adverse environmental impacts. We were not able to make findings in support of one, two, or three due to spot zoning, unknown compatibility with existing uses, and unknown traffic impacts associated with the general plan amendment and rezone. Next slide, please. Rezones actually require two findings be made. They're similar. Applicable provisions and policies of the code, general plan, and ordinance in any approved zoning or land use plan that the project conforms with those, and that the project will not result in significant adverse environmental impacts. We were not able to make those findings. Next slide, please. A sequo analysis was done, however, because staff is recommending denial, denial decisions do not require a sequo review. If the board decides to approve the rezone and general plan amendment, then a sequo evaluation would be necessary. We would need to evaluate such things as traffic impacts associated with not only retail cannabis, but any potential use that were to be considered for a C2 zoned property. Next slide, please. On July 14, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this application. They had to make two findings, one that although, well, one that it was a spot zoning, and that, two, sale of commercial cannabis at this location would be for the greater good of the community. A general plan and rezone do not guarantee the only retail cannabis sales occur on this property, and the impacts are unknown. Next slide, please. We did receive one public comment from Thomas Matic, it should be in the packet. I didn't understand some of his concerns, but it's in the record. Next slide, please. Recommendation, staff is recommending that the board deny the rezone and the general plan amendment for the reasons stated. However, if the board decides to approve these applications, we would recommend that the board require staff to return to the initial study, update the study, and bring it back to the board for further consideration. And that concludes the presentation.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions from the board? Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, just appreciate the information provided. Obviously, the difference between C2 and C3 there, you know, obviously it was the yoga place, as you said before, and there are a couple other businesses that are located right there, is that they, is it a...
Self-storage?
There's self-storage, but there's a hydroponic store right there too, right, that moved in, that used to be where Days Supply was. It's kind of transitioned a couple of times in that area. Yeah, the spot zoning is where I have the trouble with it, where we're putting these spots, you know, all over the place. I think there are opportunities, I think there, you made a statement earlier that there are other cannabis stuff in Lower, I know of one that's approved just past the school. I don't think it's open yet, I think it's still in construction in that area, and there may be a potential of another one, from what I've heard from concerns of a community member, but that hasn't made it through the process yet. So at this point, I'd like to hear the conversation for the rest of the board, but the thing that really, for me, I can't get over is the, is the spot zoning issue we've talked about for that. So that makes it a real challenge from my point of view.
If I might add a little bit of context, this project had already been noticed to go before the Planning Commission when I started as deputy director and started reviewing staff reports. In general, we strongly discourage any type of spot zoning because it presents land use conflicts going forward. As planners, we don't just look at the proposed use that's in front of us, we look at proposed uses going forward, because as you know, things come and goes.
Yeah.
Uses change. I am aware of the land use conflicts that are presented when switching something from service commercial, which is appropriately placed sort of out on the fringes because of its higher impacts of noise, odor, things like that. It's placed away from where most of the community shopping activity goes on, which is C2, so that's where you get your retail, either cannabis or just regular retail restaurants, things where we're expecting more traffic, pedestrian, car traffic, things like that. It's more of a community-centered. And so I was unable to find any reason why we would go against the planning best management practices of avoiding spot zoning entirely, and so that kind of made it a little bit awkward, because at that point, it was already noticed, and I switched the department's position from approval to denial. And so that's why, so it went to the Planning Commission with that recommendation of denial, which they, they didn't support. And so rezones and general plan amendments come to you for consideration. But that's why this project seems a little stilted, because it kind of changed, it did a whole bout face midstream.
Thank you. So I'll go to Ms. Grant, I think you turned on your microphone.
I did, thank you. Just, just in terms of what the case law says on this issue, let me just, if I may, just read a quick excerpt.
Yes.
From a court case. "The creation of an island of property with less restrictive zoning in the middle of properties with more restrictive zoning is spot zoning. Spot zoning may or may not be impermissible depending upon the circumstances. It may be justified if there is a substantial public need." So while it's not absolutely illegal, your board would be looking for a substantial public need in order to justify spot zone.
Thank you. And so what I'll do is I'll go to Vice Chair Pyska, Supervisor Sabatier, then Supervisor Green.
I, I find the spot zoning really problematic, too, and I'm glad that Director Turner spoke. I was kind of where I was going with this, too. If we separate out the proposed use with the future use and how that will fit in with future businesses down the road, it just does not seem compatible. And then I don't find that there's a substantial public need for this particular business and this spot.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I appreciate the conversation. I know I watched the videos of how the Planning Commission deliberation went on, and I, I, I will share that it's distracting to know what potentially will be there, rather than really focusing at what can C2 offer as far as a whole. Because C2 also could be a restaurant, and looking at right next door to it, there's a, I mean, I wouldn't even call it a truck yard, that's a, that's a construction yard that's preparing... That's a, that's a construction yard that's preparing for some very heavy duty type of work, uh, right next door, creates dust, creates noise. Uh, all of a sudden we would be creating the same situation we've seen where people are complaining about ag on ag land where, well, that's what ag land is for, is for ag. And so to me, we got to try to steer clear of those types of conflicts. Uh, I know in speaking with Director Turner, uh, C3 is noisier and just it, it's meant to be a working area while C2 is meant to be an enjoyable area that you can go visit like a downtown type of situation where that, that's, that's, that's a very, um, uh, there's conflict for those two to be one and another. I'm also in the belief that C2 is more meant to be within a community growth boundary rather than outside of the community growth boundary. And I would suspect that if we did sequel on this, we would see that there's an, an increased greenhouse emissions because of the fact that people have to leave their community to get to it rather than have simple access. I know there was talks about public benefit during the, uh, uh, planning commission. I'm not going to disagree with their reasoning of the benefits of having access to dispensaries, but this to me is access that's away from where true access should be, which is more in a community growth boundary. Uh, so I, at, at this moment in time, I just can't make sense of saying yes because I think it would create a lot of complications in the future as, uh, things eventually changed over to what else is allowable within a C2 surrounded by a heavy duty, more industrial type of C3. So.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I am looking forward to hearing from the applicant. And I did not catch all of the, uh, planning commission video, but I did, I got some of it. I got the gist of it. So question for staff, two, two of them and one, I do appreciate looking up what was available in the literature as far as trip generation. Uh, I don't necessarily accept, um, without added context to what the, that engineering thing was. I don't know how much weight to give that particular thing, but I do appreciate the effort on that. I will notice there are, uh, adequate access roads, uh, wide roads, uh, regardless of the number of trips, the road infrastructure there is quite suitable to, uh, serve this use. Um, and other than an academic opposition to spot zoning in general, I will distinguish two, two things. One, the proposal here, which is to, uh, spot zone to a less intensive use in a more intensive area, C3 surrounding it versus the converse. If I had a bunch of C2, a retail center and somebody wanted to drop a C3 junkyard in the middle of it, yeah, I'd probably have a problem with that. But, uh, I wonder if staff and/or the applicant could explain a little bit on, uh, do we, do we care at all if we are parsing this into a less intense use in a, uh, area that would otherwise be zoned for more intensive uses? That seems to me to be on the applicant. If they want to do it in a, in a neighborhood surrounded by junkyards and stuff like that, probably not the best thing, but it is what it is. And the second question for staff, and I think what really the elephant in the room is here, is the fact that, uh, C2 allows by right placing of these businesses and it's either not allowed at all in C3 or it's a major use permit. So I don't think this rezone came out of nowhere. Uh, I wasn't paying attention back then and I don't, I don't know what happened with this, but, uh, at some point our commercial cannabis ordinance allowed a by right retail application, uh, without any type of use permit and they just have the site there. So this may be kind of a canary in a coal mine if there's not a lot of C2 elsewhere in the county. Uh, we could see similar applications like this just based on a, a lack of availability of developable land. And last comment now, just to the public need, absolutely. I'm an old school cannabis warrior. Safe access to medicinal cannabis and adult use cannabis is very much in the public interest here in Lake County. This is the developing county and we have a lot of people with health needs here. Uh, so creating safe access all around the lake, um, doing the best you can with what you have, um, this appears to be that type of project. Uh, and the other thing that hadn't got mentioned and maybe was reinforced at planning commission is this is an economic generator. This is sales tax. This is measure K tax. Uh, we don't have a lot of that coming in just yet, but, um, it's important that when a good quality project comes in, notwithstanding the difficulties in citing that this may propose, uh, this may pose, uh, that we not reject it out of hand just based on kind of a, uh, uh, strict adherence to planning principles when we really have to, we, this board and the planning commission are entitled to add some nuance to those basic concerns. So with that, I, I am looking forward to hearing from the applicant.
All right. Did, uh, was there anything that, uh, you wanted to address in his, uh, in Supervisor Green's comments?
I kind of caught a couple of questions in the comments. The first one being, does the department care about spot zoning as far as a less intensive use? Uh, absolutely. We care very much. As part of the review for the project, we take a look at rezoning. And, you know, rezoning can happen pretty straightforward as a process if say, let's say this property wasn't in the middle of C3 but was rather adjacent to C, to C3 but had C2 around it, no problem. We can work with that. Uh, it's, it's only when it creates that little island because to address maybe number two, I don't remember which one the elephant in the room was. It was either two or three, but to address the elephant in the room is actually not compelling for us as we're doing an analysis of the project because we're taking a look not only at what the applicant proposes, but all the other uses that could be for C2 in the future. Because when, let's say, um, let's say the applicant decides to relocate, let's, let's say they get the rezone, install the, the retail there, but find that they're not getting the street traffic that they were hoping for because there's less street traffic in C3 and then they relocate. This still remains C2. And so when we're doing that analysis, we're taking a look at all possible C2 uses. The policy development for zoning districts that were appropriate for retail actually is before my time. So we're still, I'm still reviewing that, um, but I'd be happy to get an answer about how it worked out, um, after I do that review. I think that maybe other members of the board would be really, also be able to, uh, speak to that better than I would at this time.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. With that, uh, if there's not any other comments from the board, I will open it up to the public and, uh, ask the applicant to come up and, uh, speak if there's anything you'd like to state. Ms. Pang.
Good morning, Board. Good morning, Board.
I'm not sure that the microphone's on, sir. Um, okay, there we go. Try again.
Good morning.
There we go.
Hello, I'm Valerie Pang. Um, I don't know if anybody got a chance to see the PowerPoint presentation that the planning commission was able to view. I also emailed it to you this morning. Um, I'm not sure if you got to take a look at that. Um, however, I can just kind of briefly go over a few things, um, to try to clear up a few of your concerns and, um, yeah, so basically I'm representing High Grade Supply Co. Um, we have a team of individuals that have worked really hard to create, uh, sustainable, um, cannabis businesses in Lake and Sonoma County. Um, basically our company is requesting support from our supervisors. Um, we have businesses in three, actually four districts now in Lake County. Um, this retail location will actually support 15 cultivations that we currently buy from in every single, uh, district in Lake County. So I actually, um, we, we're actually asking for your support to vertically integrate into Lake County. Um, our team owns cultivation, a distribution center across the street from this actual location and processing center. So right now, basically we do a lot of our brand packaging and things like that at our Sonoma distribution company. We would like to bring that, um, that revenue and kind of what we're doing there to Lake County. And if we had our retail location right there, it would make just perfect sense. Um, we basically have, we have, um, and I have spoken to the department, um, about a few things is we don't plan on having high traffic, um, nothing more than what the Berkham Yoga Studio already had before us. And then it was vacant for a number of years. We are going with a integrated delivery model, um, for Lake County to provide even in more, um, safe access to cannabis and kind of, and we are looking at a model from Berkeley and now Napa is using as well. Um, basically, you know, our team has a passion to provide high grade cannabis. We work with, very closely with SC Labs and we have been recommended to vertically integrate to make sure that our companies are healthy with the ebbs and flows of the supply chain. Um, as you know, this year there are many cultivations who are not able to operate and will not probably be able to pay what they need to pay and the financial economic impact of that is very severe for our community when in general, uh, Lake County is getting taxes from the cultivations, um, rather than any other, um, any other prod cannabis projects. So, I mean, I would like to formally introduce myself. I know I only have a couple of minutes, so I don't want to take too much of your time. Um, but I, I'm currently, um, and then my position within the cannabis space is very interesting. Um, I, I am the owner and founder of four cannabis businesses, will be five, um, three in Lake County currently and two in Sonoma County, an indoor cultivation, distribution in Sonoma, cultivation here, distribution and processing. Basically, I launched two brands, um, three months ago. We've been working on them for about a year and a half and they are now in 20 California dispensaries. Um, our company, High Grade Supply Co., we have a multimillion dollar budget. Like I said, we support 15 cultivations in Lake County. We have seven long-term supply contracts, um, with those cultivations. So we've been supporting them through this, you know, really tough time. Um, and we will continue to try to integrate even more into Lake County for manufacturing contracts with a lot of the bigger outdoor cultivations that are approved. So I, like I said, I work closely with SC Labs. So I wouldn't say that this is just a one zone, um, it was, it's not, it's not in one district, um, that we kind of, you, you would feel our ripple, um, in the cannabis industry. Um, also I would like to point out that this spot zoning, everything around it is owned by the same owner and we have the support from all the businesses around it also, including my own business. I own the 12,000 square foot warehouse where we're doing processing and packaging. It would be very easy to deliver our processing and packaging as we deliver to the community. Um, also there is, uh, I don't, I don't know about the traffic implications more than there already is. I think the, the place right now has about nine parking spaces, I think, seven, seven to nine parking spaces, including handicapped. Um, and before, uh, Maria, we actually did get a recommendation from the county before I went into a long-term 10-year lease with the owner, who's also a partner of mine, um, that because like you, like, uh, Mr. Green was saying, the impact goes from a, a zone three to a zone two, we were actually recommended that this would probably pass as a rezone because I probably wouldn't have invested, you know, $80,000 into the building thus far if we didn't, if we thought it was going to be an issue moving forward. We had talked to multiple planners, uh, when I first got the lease, um, but we're here now, so I would ju, I'm just kind of telling you the history of the project. So we have put about, about 70 to 85,000, when I looked at the numbers yesterday, into the building, just putting new, just new floors, uh, getting all the proper surveillance equipment for the, uh, dispensary, um, also putting, um, putting some disabled things so that people can get into the building properly and things like that. Um, and just making sure that the weed abatement is cleaned up. I don't, I haven't seen any of the newer pictures of the building, but the building looks phenomenal now. Um, and so as cannabis grows into our community, uh, my company is definitely going to represent cannabis at a higher level than maybe Lake has had in the past. Um, I'm working very closely with a few vineyards and wineries in Napa County as well to offer events and things like that, and I plan to do that as well in Lake County. So I have, um, I've been a resident here for about 33 years. Um, I grew up here as a child. I came here when I was three years old. Um, I really love my community. I, I'm staying here forever. Um, and I graduated from Sac State with my master's degree in social work and psychology. Um, I worked for a law firm for a few years, um, went, came back to my own community to work as a professor at Woodland Community College and moved on to work as a business consultant and medical social worker for the hospital and the community engagement department. Um, I've worked with multiple tribes doing huge grants, economic development projects, including cannabis projects, and I would really like the opportunity to vertically integrate into my own community. Um, I can buy a dispensary license at this moment in Sonoma for $150,000 for a delivery. Um, due to the market, there has been some really, you know, hard times in the cannabis industry, but what I bring to the table for Lake County and in cannabis and in our community in general is huge. Um, the, it would be called Lake Herbal Sanctuary. Um, there would be a lot of education around, um, proper use of cannabis and other herbal modalities. So we wouldn't only be delivering just cannabis, but we'd also be delivering teas and wild leaf lettuce, uh, teas and things like that, that decrease opioid use and things like that in our community. So it's a very different vibration, I think, than your, your usual dispensary that you would see. Um, another, a few other things is that it is sequel exempt because there's no changes to the building whatsoever. Um, also, we would increase jobs through the packaging and processing at the warehouse across the street, plus the retail location, um, and the two delivery drivers that we would hire. Um, I plan on having two Teslas, so it'll also have a less of impact on the community and the, um, greenhouse gas, gas emissions. Um, what else? Uh, the project is in line with the state of California cannabis retail goals, um, as they provide, they will be providing grant monies to social equity retail applicants, which I am, uh, which my company is. And, and they, as, as a whole, California is supporting more retail, um, to support the industry as a whole, to be able to outlet more of the cannabis so that we can continue our cultivations and things like that. There's also positive socioeconomic factors, um, for our community as we know many research, my, tons of research has been done on safe access to cannabis and the more, um, access that we have, the, the decrease in opioid use in our community is. Um, so I hope that you guys take into consideration, um, what the planning commission has approved as, you know, voted on the rezone. I think that it's important that we look at the businesses around it. It's a cannabis, there's two other cannabis related businesses already, uh, which is the largest hydroponic store in Lake County and then my actual distribution and, and packaging center, uh, right across the street as well.
I think we have a question from Supervisor Sabatier.
I, I have a question for the board. I, I, I appreciate the level of detail, but I feel like we're doing a use permit pairing with all of these details of a project versus a rezone. And I think that it deviates and distracts from understanding if a rezone is appropriate or not appropriate by looking at what does C2 offer and what does C3 offer? I think in my opinion, the details go into a realm of something that that's not what we're here for today.
I hear that.
That's just my opinion.
And I hear that. I just, um, allowed, uh, Ms. Pang to speak because I think she was, uh, giving an insight as to the need of the community. So I figured I'd let her continue. Plus, last time she went to speak on this and didn't have the opportunity, so I felt the need to give her the opportunity to speak. And so, uh, if that completes your, your presentation, I have people on the Zoom that have public input. If there's not any other questions, I think Supervisor Green has one.
Just a real quick question. Um, when you were researching possible locations, you focused on C2 for a reason, correct?
Yeah, C2. I did focus on C2 to find a, a location. However, I did go to the department, like I said, um, a year and a half, two years ago, yeah, a year and a half ago, um, and asked them about the location and they said because it was decreasing in a zone that it wouldn't be an issue moving forward. And that was, you know, a recommendation that I took seriously. I should have, if there was a different, there was a lot of changes in the department at the time and I should have taken it to a higher level, um, but I did even talk to a director. So I wouldn't have necessarily went into a 10-year lease that I have now with that building. Um, if, so that, that's my, that's my dilemma because it's not like I can't go, you know what I mean? Go find another zone. I can go to another district or something like that.
I guess that's my question. Did you?
Yeah.
Did you conduct a search and was there a scarcity of C2 in other areas?
There was a scarcity of C2, but there also was a recommendation from the department that it would, it would, uh, be okay to rezone and they did approve.
Answer your questions, Supervisor Green. Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions from the board? All right. Um, so with that, thank you for your presentation and what you've had to state about this project and. and if there's possibly any questions from people online, I'll go ahead and ask you to return. But what I'll do is I'll open it up to Zoom where we have Russell Kramer. You have your hand raised. If you could state your name for the record, and we'll go ahead and start your three minutes.
Thank you, Supervisor Crandall. My name is Russ Kramer, and I wrote a letter to you as President of the Lower Lake Community Action Group, which I think you have in front of you somewhere.
Yes.
Won't go into the whole letter. I assume you have read it all, my comments, but some specific comments and answer a little bit to Ms. Pang. I don't dispute that there is a market in Lake County for cannabis. I'm not speaking against cannabis. This is strictly related to the fact that you're trying to spot rezone a C3 use, which is not compatible with a C2 use. I understand that she has other businesses in the area. I think there's other areas where C2 is available, but I haven't researched that. But the point being that this particular spot is zoned, location in the general area around it, is Zone C3, and agriculture to the western, rural residential north and south of it, and more agriculture. There's no, there is C2, I think the closest is in Lower Lake proper to the north, and of course Hidden Valley to the south, and beyond that, Middletown. As far as the need, the greater good right here, as I noted in my letter, there's, I think, what, there are cannabis, it seems like a 1 to 5 to 6,000 ratio has worked through the county. Lower Lake, of course, has three dispensaries in it. Lower Lake does, as you pointed out, Supervisor Simon, have one that's on the verge of opening. Looks like they're, when I drove by the other day, it looks like they're just ready to go. That serves, that serves the community of Lower Lake. While there might be underserved areas in Lake County, I don't think Lower Lake is one of them. Moreover, the general plan, the area plan, the rise of general plan for Lower Lake has not been, it was last updated in 1988. I think we need to be looking at a complete, at a look at that area plan and then look at the general plan, see where the trend is. There isn't a trend that I can see for C2 in this specific area. And that's what we should be concentrating on, not whether it's cannabis or retail store, a restaurant, or what have you. That's not the question. The question here is that you're doing a spot rezone, which is, in most cases, is a bad thing, is bad zoning. And I would ask that the board focus on that part of the issue.
All right. Thank you for your, your three minutes is up, sir. If you wanted to close on anything else?
No, those were the points that I wanted to make for you.
All right, thank you. And so, I'll continue on Zoom. I see someone has their hand up, but I'll continue with Zoom. It looks like we have Richard Durham. If you can unmute, state your name for the record, and we'll start in three minutes.
Yes, my name is Richard Durham. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. So, when California made recreational cannabis eligible, one of the things that they did was they allowed counties to opt out. So, if you look at a map of
We're getting some feedback. I'm not sure exactly what's going on, but we're getting some feedback, so.
Pardon me?
Yeah, okay, we can hear you better now.
So, more than 50% of the counties do not allow retail sales, and that has put the growers into a real tailspin because they can't get rid of their product in California. I recommend that you do pass this. It's a small dispensary. It has highway frontage. We owe it to the cultivators in the county to have a place for them to be able to sell their product. There are no residential homes next to this, and like I said, it does have a highway frontage, so it would be accessible to a lot of out-of-county people who would be spending money in the county. So, with that, I'll let it go. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like next we have CTA LCCOC. If you can unmute, state your name for the record, and we'll start in three minutes. All right. There you go.
Okay, thank you. I'm Colleen Lee, yes, and I am also on the Lower Lake Community Action Group. I just want to reiterate, I hope everybody did read Russ's letter. It is to the point. And once again, I do think that we are getting away from the difference between cannabis and what the rezoning is actually about. I am concerned that Supervisor Green has not been down there. He hasn't seen the roads. It is not a road per se, it's just a little easement to go in. There is no stop sign at the end of the street. But again, I'm hoping that you guys understand, I do live in the area. So, I'm hoping that you do take it under consideration that the spot zoning is wrong, and I would like to also know why the address is Highway 29 and not Clayton Creek as well. But it sounds like with all her other businesses, I'm sure that she understood, she has four other businesses, or soon to be six, I believe, she has plenty of choices within the districts to find another location. Thank you.
Thank you. So, with that, we have one more hand up. Joan, if you'd like to come up and speak, please come to the microphone and state your name for the record, and after that, I'll close public input. Come on up, Joan. And this is for a rezone.
Thank you. I'd like you to explain what spot zoning is, and I think that on Main Street, Cal City Hall, there's a lot of different stores that sell wine. And I think that retail cannabis is comparable these days to wine, and I think this woman ought to get a break. There are 15 different cultivations that are part of her business, and I want to know how much taxes they've paid. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. I'll close public input from here forward, and if there's anyone that wants to elaborate on spot zoning, Supervisor Sabatier?
I would ask Director Turner, I don't think you can open up a convenience store or a liquor store in a C3. I don't know that that's allowed, so I think that
That's more of a C2, community commercial use.
Right, so, selling wine at that location, unless it was across the street, it's ag where there's a winery, but it would not be allowed to have a store that sells wine, so just want to make that comment. But as far as spot zoning, I'll let the
Not to mention, any sale of alcohol requires a license, doesn't it? State license?
And that is one of my concerns. C2 allows bars as an allowable use. A location that far away from the main community, I just think there's certain allowable uses that I think creates problems in my mind.
Regarding the definition for spot zoning, I would defer to County Council because she gave us a really good one in the beginning.
All right. Ms. Crandall, if you wanted to
Go back and find what I did.
Yeah, if you want to elaborate on spot zoning.
Okay. Shall I just reread what I had?
Yes.
All right. "The creation of an island of property with less restrictive zoning in the middle of properties with more restrictive zoning is spot zoning. Spot zoning may or may not be impermissible depending upon the circumstances. A rezoning ordinance may be justified if a substantial public need exists."
Thank you for that. And so, with that, if there's nothing else, I think it's, it looks like we're ready for action. I know we have a hard stop at 11:45, so I don't know if there's any more discussion that needs to be done, or anybody's ready to take action?
Ready to take action.
All right, go ahead, Supervisor Simon.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Supervisors find that the rezone and general plan amendment, or rezone 2201, a general plan amendment, GPAP 2021, applied for by Valerie Ping on a property located 11377, Highway 29. Lower Lake further described as APN 049-300-02 does not meet the requirements of Section 47.22 and Article 19 of Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and the rezoning and general plan amendment be denied based on the findings listed in the memorandum dated November 8, 2022.
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second. Joan, can you please conduct a roll call vote on this?
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
No.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye. And so, the motion passes, and it looks like we'll move on to our break, which is 11:45 break, but we'll start a little early. Thank you very much, Community Development Director Turner and Eric Porter. With that
There's a typo in the break. It's 12:45 PM.
Okay, and so, just for, yeah, thank you for that note. Just to let you know, on 6.8 is a break from 11:45 AM to 12:45 PM. It's listed as AM, but it's PM. So, we will see you at 12:45 and continue from there forward.
It's really hopeful right now.
All right. Ooh, we're a little past, aren't we? Sorry. Ready? Okay, it looks like we're back, and we're back. From our break, I guess it was an included lunch break as well, right?
We had
Yeah, I think so. Okay, so, we got
We got lunch, right?
So, our 1 o'clock is, we still got eight minutes, so I think we can cover our calendars. I think we can conduct that, because there's not too many other things that we didn't cover, so. Any volunteers to go first?
I will.
All right. All right, Chair Pisca, go ahead.
Yeah, so, we just came away from a CPUC meeting where Supervisor Crandall and I were on the panel for equity and the Rule 20, and talking about how we could have more local and tribal collaboration with the undergrounding projects. And then tomorrow, I have an agenda review, and then home hardening, and then benefit assessment zone meeting with staff. Thursday is the Fire Safe Council meeting. We have our Risk Reduction Authority budget meeting was moved from last week to this week. There's a 100 Women Strong meeting in Middletown that evening, but I'm not sure I'll be able to make it. And then Friday, I'm planning on being at the Conoc de Vista event. And then Monday, gonna be flying to Anaheim for the CSAC convention and coming back on Yeah, and then back here on the 22nd. But the 21st, I will have Risk Correction, Forest Health, wildfire and Forest Health Task Force meetings in Sacramento, but hopefully catch that webinar before we have our Risk Correction Authority. And then back here on the 22nd.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, so, what happened last week? I did take part in some Blue Zones meetings. Foods, etc. is now officially the first Blue Zones grocery store of Lake County. Hopefully, we'll see more of that, and so, just highlighting healthy eating and making that an easy choice and an easy option for those shopping over there. And more to come. With that, I'm expecting that our restaurants are going to jump on board, our school cafeterias, because Conoc de Unified School District is also the first school district to jump on board with Blue Zones, so we'll start seeing their Blue Zones logo more and more, and just trying to incentivize healthy eating and healthy activities for better overall health, as we know we've all been working towards how we can do that, and this is one of those building blocks of the solutions available to us. Also, I had, I actually graduated, they allowed me to graduate from Ag Venture. That was our fourth day. We had a conversation about Chase Water and Olive Press.
Jeez, sorry. I don't know how that happened. Go ahead.
And so, we checked out the Olive Press that's happening over at Chase Water, a better understanding of how many olive trees were in Lake County, the process and so on, and then we also had what was a, not necessarily a new perspective that I've never heard, but definitely an intimate perspective of the experience of our farm workers here. And I think it's, I think that was well organized and a very good presentation for all of us to listen to and ask questions about. Overall, appreciate Ag Venture. Definitely, to me, as I stated to the team who put it together, which is the Farm Bureau and the California Women's
California Women in Ag.
Women in Ag, I knew it ended in A, thank you. And they're putting all of that together, appreciate their efforts for that, and to me, it's all about the details, a better ability to speak of our local agriculture, our greater ability to be a proponent of our local agriculture, so I appreciated the amount of information that I was able to absorb through that. On Saturday, also want to thank all of those who put together, which I'm guessing is mostly our Sheriff's Deputy Association, who put together Shop with a Cop, went out there in support of that, very well attended, and I don't know the exact number that they fundraised, but they definitely fundraised quite a bit, and looking to take care of up to 200 children this Christmas and take them shopping at Walmart. Let's see, what's going on next week? I know I got a cancellation, which I was kind of surprised about, because I thought we canceled the last one, too. So, now we have, My Wednesday opened up, LTA PC was canceled. I am having a discussion with our Ag Commissioner later on that day, just trying to take things that I've learned and things that I foresee need to be discussed for the future from Ag Venture, and having that discussion with our Ag Department and our Ag Commissioner. Then on Thursday, at this moment, all I have is the Clean Water Act program. I thought I had something else, but it's pretty empty. And then, I believe the website is, hopefully, we'll have all the approvals from all of the department heads, and we'll see where we are with the website. For some reason, my calendar is very light, but other than that, I'll be filling that in with other work as I prepare for bringing stuff to the board agenda, and I believe that's it for now until Tuesday. Oh, and I do have a PEG Board meeting that evening on Monday, the 14th as well, so that's it.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. First of all, I just, returning back to work here, I want to thank for, you know, all the well wishes and everything with my family. I appreciate that. Tomorrow, I have, yeah, we had LTA PC, but as you said, it's been canceled, so I will make that Lake County Project Team meeting, which I have on my calendar. Lower Lake Action Committee Group has not been meeting on Wednesdays. Hopefully, in the beginning of the year, we'll get that started again. We did hear from them today, obviously, with Russ Kramer, so they're still active in the community and greatly appreciate the work they do. On Thursday, have the RRA Budget Meeting that was moved, and I will be attending that on Thursday. It's going to be here, Jessica, in the courthouse. And then Thursday night, we have the math meeting, Middletown Area Town Hall. This week, we will be discussing, you know, Special District will be there talking about sewer rate increases, so that's on the agenda, so we'll be addressing that. On Friday, I do, I did have an email, which I'm looking back through here. Did Congressman Thompson's office reach out to anybody else about reading something on a Veterans Day celebration? So, I'll get back with Brad. Is anyone else going to be attending the 11? All right, I will reach out to them Friday?
On Friday?
Yes, on Friday. If there's a statement that Congressman wants Yes, on Friday. If there's a statement that the Congressman wants to rewrite, I will get that to you.
Excellent.
All right, because I think, can three of us be at that one, Anita? It's just a community veterans' celebration.
Yeah, it's just a public celebration. As long as you're not discussing county business, you're fine.
So then I'll get that coordinated. I'm probably gonna attend that, too. So I'll just go over there. And if I can't, I'll coordinate with you, EJ, on that. And obviously, thank all the veterans for our service, for their service to our communities, and you as the chair, thank you for your service. Saturday, Friday night, have a football game, playoff game. Lake County teams are in the playoffs. I think we have four right now for football. I think soccer just kind of wrapped up, too. I just want to say that, you know, being a coach in this community, seeing all the schools and the participation, this little county puts some good stuff on the map, I tell you. So I just want to congratulate all the fall teams for their runs in the playoffs or potential runs in the playoffs. So just, you know, want to bring the highlight to the hard work and, you know, that those kids put in every year and all the volunteers that go out there and do the work with the kids. So just want to highlight that, obviously, and wish everybody luck. And we can, I think the only two may run into each other is Kelseyville and Clearlake, maybe, but the other schools warrel in different divisions. So it's interesting. So wish everybody luck, stay healthy, and have a good time in the playoffs. So Saturday, Sunday, I'll be out of town. I'll be attending something over in Chico on Saturday, and then back here for the meeting on Tuesday. And once again, I just, I want to thank for the outpouring of support of the family and myself during these tough times, obviously. Thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. I may have overshared last week, so this week I'm undersharing. I'm gonna fly out Sunday to CSAC and fly back on Friday. I get to go to the Monday session for newbie supervisors, and I guess there's a little course that goes after that. So I'm looking forward to hanging out and putting mouse ears on in all our spare time. I'm sure there will be lots of spare time down there. I do hope to attend the event on Friday out at the casino. It was a great event, very moving event last year. I think this year will probably be even better. So as we mentioned during the previous session, yeah, there'll be some sadness, but it really is a happy time to come together as a community, celebrate the strength of our country and the strength that our veterans have committed in laying down their lives and their bodies and their well-being for us and our nation. Other than that, my calendar mainly involves little whining sessions and trying to get my computer set up. I'm very jealous of all the people looking at their calendar and emails, so I'm gonna be working to get all up to speed so I can be very communicative with everybody and all that. But still gonna be doing some department head meetings this week. Got about halfway through, I suppose, and very appreciative of all the department heads I've already met with. Very constructive conversations, very positive, definitely some challenges in most of our departments, but I'm very excited to be able to work with them and looking forward to the department heads I haven't met, been able to meet with yet. So appreciate everyone's patience as I go into this learning curve. But that's it for my calendar. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I'll give you my calendar. So tomorrow, I have an agenda review, then a meeting with Senator McGuire for the, with Train, CEDMC meeting. Let's see, I have Thursday Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee with RCRC, then Clean Water meeting on Thursday. Friday, I'll be attending the veterans' event at Conoc de Vista Casino. Let's see, Saturday, 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 I don't think I have anything planned yet. CAO meeting on Monday, Community Vision Forum Planning, meeting on that day. Highlight on some things that happened last week. Let's see, first I'll go backwards. One Team One Dream, as you can see right here, we have an award that One Team One Dream gave to the county for their funding, distribution, or allocation for the event, for the businesses that applied and were, there was five for the established business that took place, and they all placed where 25,000, 20, 15, 10, and five. And I was glad that I wasn't a judge, because I would have been biased to the businesses in my district. Appreciate Supervisor Green being there as well, along with Deputy or Director Turner. Let's see, the new businesses, there was a young lady, 19 years old, that won the new business first place. And so then there was another place in Clearlake, the Beeswax, and then a lady out of Upper Lake that received funding on that, too. So it was a really good event. The gala went really well. Then, let me go back to, oh, AgVenture. That was, we graduated. We got our diplomas for that. It was a very good event. I really appreciated going to the different sites, learning about all of the intricacies of ag, which I really never fully understood. I do know that my great-grandparents were ag workers in Hopland and everywhere. They would travel and do the same thing. And so just, I know that I'm probably like two generations removed from that, but it was just wonderful to also get some insight from some of the gentlemen who are supervisors that work on the work and these different, either the pear, you know, scolies packing and some of the vineyards, and giving us their insight on how it feels to be a migrant worker, some suggestions, and having a voice. I really appreciated hearing those struggles, because a lot of people don't understand what these families go through in times when they come and work, not to mention losing family members and things of that nature. So, yeah, it was really, really touching, really, really great thing. I was glad to be going through it. So also, would like to mention, like Supervisor Simon mentioned, Upper Lake will be playing Calistoga in a playoff game this Friday. I know the soccer team ended up placing second. They got their banner. I think volleyball, I think they are in the playoffs as well, but I don't know off the top of my head. But all the, all the fall sports did really well at Upper Lake, and so I just wanted to highlight that as well. It seems like Lake County is doing really well when it comes to sports this fall, so that's great news. I know in a couple of years, it might be back to the, all of the Lake County teams competing against each other. From what I understand, it's like it was back in my day. So we didn't have the NCL3 deal going, or whatever you want to call it, where they're playing Potter Valley and all the other counties or schools that are very small. But aside from that, I think we're past, way past one, so I'll go ahead.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
Okay, I forget. Yeah, the One Team One Dream was beautiful, great presentations. You're right, I would have been totally biased. But I did jet out early, so apologies to the presenters. I went to the First Annual Pumpkin Chunkin' competition, I guess it was, out at the Pumpkin Patch off 29. And it was, it had been raining, and I don't think they had the full turnout they expected. But the people who did turn out were very gracious. It was a fun event. I got to witness, I got there in time to witness this huge pumpkin just like going off. And I don't even, it was like hundreds of feet. It was incredible. And Kelseyville High School students ended up welding together this contraption that looked way too dangerous for anybody. But it was beautiful. And I'm excited for the future of this event. It was a benefit for 4H and FFA. And it was nice to see the ag community come out and support them. And it was nice to see the students do such a great job with this highly dangerous machinery. And nobody died except a few pumpkins. So look for that event next year. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a good one.
All right. With that, we will, thank you for your calendars. It looks like we've covered that. But except for our 6.9, which is Consideration of Public Health Officer Recruitment Update, and the Consideration of the Lake County PHO Mentor Program. And it looks like we have Pam Samick from Human Resources here to present that item. And I also see Jonathan Portney, Director of Public Health, on as well, on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Board. Pam Samick, Director of HR. Lake County contracted with Mosaic Public Health Partners to provide services for the Public Health Officer recruitment. The recruitment was opened August 8th of 2022, and we began advertising on 11 sites. Advertising yielded one candidate that did not meet minimum qualifications. The Lake County recruiting website yielded 3,515 hits with seven applicants, six were unqualified. Mosaic identified and contacted 115 potential PHO candidates serving in the PHO and assistant PHO roles across California. Zero candidates were interested in the position. However, a conversation with one led to a connection with Dr. Duhan. Dr. Duhan previously served as the PHO for Mendocino County. Although she recently accepted a position, she shared valuable insights and suggestions on how to improve the attractiveness to the position in the medical community. Dr. Duhan shared that public health doctors are afraid of the political nature of the position, especially in counties where there's been turnover in the position. She believes our position would be more attractive if proper support was provided. She was provided a mentor when she took the position in Mendocino County, and it was invaluable to her, and ultimately led to her accepting the position as the PHO. Dr. Duhan has a substantial network in public health, and she would actively promote and encourage doctors to consider the Lake County position if she believes our new PHO would be provided the kind of support she received. Dr. Duhan proposes a mentor program similar to the program she was provided in Mendocino. The proposed mentor program is three to six months in duration. The first one to two months, five to 10 hours per week. Third month would be up to five hours per week. Months four through six would be as needed, not to exceed 10 hours per month. Her consulting rate is $250 per hour. Staff believes that the recruitment and ultimately the PHO position would be more successful with access to Dr. Duhan's network and support. Jonathan Portley, Health Services Director, has spoken with Dr. Duhan and is here to share his insights and merits of the proposed mentor program.
Thank you, Pam, and good afternoon, Board, and hello, community. I wish I could be there with you in person next time. I have intent to do so. Supervisor Green, it was great meeting with you last week. Dr. Mimi Duhan is a skilled PHO and physician. And as Pam has indicated, the opportunity to provide a comprehensive, well-rounded resource like Mimi to incoming PHO would be invaluable. Now, I did receive confirmation from HOAC, which is a Health Officer Coalition, and they are rolling out also a six-month PHO education mentorship program. However, that's not going to be rolled out until the next year. So how I see it will be beneficial to the Board, to the Health Department, and to the county, as Pam has expressed, with strong consideration for contracting Mimi to onboard a PHO for us. From there, we will be able to roll the PHO into the HOAC program when it is rolled out to continue the education. It'd be unfair for us as leaders to expect a non-public health medical director to have a public health well-rounded concept in only six months. So I feel like this stepping stone approach to onboarding to support our county will be invaluable and beneficial. And I would like to recommend the Health Department and Pam and leadership to move forward to contract Mimi Duhan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or any follow-up on this, Ms. Samick?
We also have Greg Nelson from Mosaic on Zoom, if you have any questions of him. At this point, we seek approval to enter into an agreement with Dr. Duhan to start the PHO mentorship program to not exceed $25,000.
All right. Any questions? Supervisor Sabatier?
So I, I understand that we're trying to incentivize and add new reasons for people to come here, but I struggle with this one. I know that every department head has an association to go to. Right now, the association doesn't have a specific mentorship program, but that doesn't mean that the association is not available for questions, for guidance, for any kind of information sharing that they're going to be looking for to be able to tackle the problems that they're dealing with here locally. I struggle with this one. I know that what we're looking for and the pay that we're paying for is not, to me, it doesn't require a mentorship program. It just requires you to connect with the people that you should be connecting with that are already within the job positions. All around the state of California, there's 58 counties to reach out to. I just, I, I don't think the issue is the mentorship, in my opinion. And I kind of, I mean, maybe it was just phrased this way, but the idea that she'll share with her colleagues if we hire her, I struggle with that right there. Again, I would rather go through an RFP if we're gonna do a mentorship program, not just the one person who has reached out to us. But I just, I think there are things available right now that everybody who's a department head right now is using, and that we just have to make sure and provide them those tools and let them know that it's already available for them to get the guidance and mentorship that they might need. So that's where I am.
Any questions? Other questions?
I think that Greg could also address, and it might have been the way it was phrased, I'll give you my network if you hire me, but I do believe she has a genuine interest in Lake County and the Mendo area and wants to help us succeed, but knows how difficult this position is without the right mentorship. And she doesn't want to open up her considerable network and promote Lake County without knowing there's substantial support for this role to actually succeed, because she's saying to the people that she's networked with for many years, go to Lake, it's a great place. She just wants to ensure that this person has the right support to succeed. And I'll turn it over to Greg a little bit, who's had in-depth conversations with Dr. Duhan.
Thank you, Pam, and good afternoon, members of the Board. It's been a really interesting opportunity working for, on behalf of Lake County, to help recruit for this position, because it's been really difficult to get an audience from candidates. We have reached out to public health officials in all counties of California, including the State Department of Public Health, over 100 potential candidates. And we just really couldn't get anyone that was interested in even having a serious conversation about considering the position. But through that, we did get connected to Dr. Duhan. I was just really immediately impressed with not only her genuine care and concern for the profession, for public health officers and what they can do, but also for the region, as Pam said, for Lake County, Mendocino. She kind of sees them as one and the same, and just knows how, how much good work can be done there. And so she had the personal experience of going through a mentorship program in Mendocino County, and just really talked at great length about how that was helpful for someone to enter the public arena, you know, understanding public agencies and working for an elected board, and really how to make the most out of that position. And she felt, number one, that she wouldn't have even accepted the position in Mendocino County without that arrangement, but even if she had, she wouldn't have been successful. And so that conversation really evolved into her willingness to be the mentor that someone else was to her. I didn't want the impression to be that she was really trying to self-promote, because that wasn't the case. It was a result of a conversation about her own experience, and she felt like she could give back in a sense, and... a sense, and provide that type of service. And as a result of that, she has, you know, considerable connections, colleague to colleague. It's one thing when a recruiter is knocking on a potential candidate's door. It's another one when a fellow peer doctor is. And she does feel like that she has some people that she could help connect us with to help us get traction in this recruitment. So as Pam has said, I, I hope the memo correspondence didn't imply it was kind of a self-promoting situation, because that was not the case. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
In addition, she has a full-time role in another county, so she is really offering this because she believes in the role, she believes in Lake County and wants to help us succeed. She doesn't need the income from this mentorship program. She's really doing it because she believes in the county.
Vice Chair Pyska?
We've been really struggling in this department for a long time. And I, mentorships are such a great idea. I know, working in the school system, the principals are assigned mentors when they take on a new job to, to be supported in a new role and to help them grow. So I, I think this is a good option for us to consider. But I'm wondering, when does the Mosaic mentorship begin? You said it was next year. Is it beginning of the year or further in the year? Oh, you said Mohawk? Oh, I thought it was Mosaic.
That's all right. It is actually, I have the email from HOAC, and it says sometime next year. So it's still in the development, so they don't have any dates or anything.
Okay. So it is something that we should consider because we don't have that as an option yet. If we were to get a candidate, and this was something that would entice them to come and grow into this role if they didn't have that experience, which we're really not finding candidates. It's been a long time since we've had a large pool of candidates. I think it's been well over a year. So I, I think it's an investment that we need to consider.
Director Portney?
Thank you, Board. I would also like to express how beneficial this immediate support will be to me as a Director of the Department. For, from the beginning, since Gary Pace left, we have initiatives like the Mohawk Program, right, that's intricate, delicate, and specific aspects of it to Lake County that I know the contract is.
I think there was...
It's going to continue to be the emergency department, but the intricacies of our county and the understanding Dr. Mimi has in navigating that would not be attainable by phoning another county or calling up here. So again, I highly recommend this really site-specific resource because it will be beneficial to support me, the program, you as a Board, and the county as a whole without hiccup. And that's what we're really trying to do here, is we transition into the opportunity for the six-month state program for onboarding PHOs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before I open it up to the public? So I'll open it up to the public at this time. If you have a comment on this item on the agenda, please come up, state your name for the record, and we'll give you three minutes. I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom or in the chambers. I do have a public e-comment online from Eileen McSorley. I'll read it off. It says, "It is imperative that the Board of Supervisors support the PHO unequivocally in order to recruit and retain a qualified candidate. Unfortunately, the Lake County LCSO undermined Gary Pace's professional authority and expertise, so we lost an eminently qualified PHO due to the largely to lack of protection from the BOs. Dr. Pace received death threats, and Health Department received bomb threats from a minority of bridled residents who are now and currently, who are now in the current quandary we face." Eileen McSorley. And so from public comment, go ahead, CAO.
Yes, I would like to add that we feel that this is a unique, that Dr. Duhan has a unique ability, given her background and experience, and also that we consider this a specialized service.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I just did want to add just a few comments. Strongly support this. I will want to thank JP for the presentation during my orientation over there, but to be honest, he had to listen to me more than I listened to him. And a lot of it involved our recent travels with the, the PHO and our challenges when we had one, our challenges when we don't have one. I'm encouraged to hear that Mohawk is slowly spinning up some support. And a lot of my comments that I did share with Director Portney had to do with the unique role of a PHO and the observation that, yeah, do you think it got a little political here in Lake County? Do you think that may account for our difficulty in recruiting for this specific position? Yeah. So this is a minimum, to me, the minimum we can do to, not only if we're going to lock in a PHO, but make sure they have any opportunity to succeed. I think the mentorship thing is a great idea as it's presented here. I think it's probably a couple of years late in terms of the state paying attention finally to the unique and fragile nature of our PHOs. And so, you know, better late than ever at Mohawk, but let's go ahead and do this now. I mean, the, the need is critical. And I'm very appreciative to Dr. Duhan for stepping up and offering that service.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, appreciate the conversation today, too. Yeah, obviously, the PHO environment is completely different than it has been before 2020. So, you know, I think that this mentor program, obviously, as we said, the first of its kind for Lake County, and kind of came out of conversations, but I think at this point, it is something we should attempt to move forward with. You know, I think the conversation obviously has hit the right folks. That's why it's looking to come from the organization, hopefully with support in the next years, or I say years, because they say next year, it could be the end of the year, when we have that opportunity. So with, with the amount of funds that this contract has under it, yeah, I, I support it also. And let's hope we get the return on investment that we're looking for in these conversations. So I'm in support.
All right. With that, if there's any, Supervisor Sabatier?
Just a quick question. I don't remember seeing it. Would this come out of the public health budget? Where, where would the funds come from?
Have you talked to him about that? Probably not. I don't know if Jonathan is on. No, I have not talked about that.
Ideally, I'm sorry.
There's Jon.
Yeah, well, sorry to interrupt, CAO. What I would envision is setting up a similar contract to our medical consultants. I think that would be the most feasible option, and open for other suggestions.
All right. Vice Chair Pyska?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion if there's any other comment.
Are there any other comments before? All right.
Okay. I move that we approve the, the agreement with Dr. Duhan for the PHO mentor program not to exceed $25,000.
Second. So I have a motion in a second, however...
I just have a question. What agreement are we agreeing to? All we have is a memo.
Right. What is...
Yes.
Is it more direction to staff?
Correct, to bring back the memo.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So is that consensus or a motion then?
Either way. You're just giving direction to staff.
And that's, well, it says approve the Lake County Public Health Officer Mentor Program. And that's just direction, or is it approval?
I, I think, I think the best way to do this would be to do a motion to approve the program and direct staff to bring back.
So moved.
So seconded. So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Director Portney. With that, it looks like we've covered everything on our agenda except for closed session. So we will move on to our item eight, closed session. 8.1, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. B1, Interviews for a Public Health Officer, Appointment of Public Health Officer. 8.2, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 5456.9D1, City of Clear Lake versus California, or County of Lake et al. 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 5456.9, Flash, versus County of Lake. 8.4, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Sabaloni versus County of Lake. With that, we'll go into closed session, and we'll see you after.
Is there any action to be taken?
Yes, there is action to be taken from closed session on item 8.4. And I move, in the matter of Sabaloni versus County of Lake, to approve the settlement in the amount of
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please, or no, just do a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, okay. Motion passes. And our meeting's adjourned.